I got the thumbs up from the tech people at the back. Excellent. I'll call the meeting to order. Is there any declaration of interest related to any matter on these, this agenda? Not seeing one. Again, if one should arise, by all means, let us know. Uh, business arising from the minutes, uh, the committee of the whole councillor McQueen has a, uh, notice of motion, so I will, uh, ask for councillor McQueen. I presume you're going to move that?
I will.
Okay, is there a second here? Councillor De Breen? Paul, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and, uh, sorry, I can't be there in person, but, uh, weather has sort of held me back from getting there in time for this morning's meeting, which I wanted to be part of this for sure. So the notice of motion is there. Do you want me to read it off, uh, Mr. Warden?
I'm sure everyone has had a chance to read it, or Madam Clerk, what would be your presence preference? It's fine. We don't need to read it out loud. I think everyone's had a chance to see it. So I'll allow you to proceed.
Okay, well, then I will speak to the motion and that is as written on and has been presented on our website. Uh, so to start with, um, there's been a, uh, as we all know, the decision that was made in, uh, August twenty-six, twenty-twenty-one was to, uh, place Gray Gables on in, uh, in a holding pattern in the sense of, uh, moving forward with the redevelopment of, of Gray Gables. And at that time, as we all, most of us know, that, uh, the plan at that time was to build a complete new building and convert Gray Gables, uh, into an assisted living. And I know we had a report back in March of twenty-twenty-two with, uh, a separate consultant that talked about Gray Gables as assisted living and the, uh, financial, uh, positiveness of that, what, uh, how that would move forward to support the sixty-six beds that we wouldn't be funded for. And, uh, uh, and that was back in March of, uh, twenty-twenty-two. But from since then, as we know, and as the, uh, there's been other information has came forward and, and a few things I want to, and again, I want to iterate today that this is not to me a decision at this time to make that decision here today. It's, it's asking for a report to come back with all the new information that has, uh, came forward since that August twenty-six date. And some of that information that's, uh, coming forward is, is we know that there was a letter dated on the twenty-fifth or thereabouts of November twenty-twenty-two with increased, uh, opportunity for, for funding. Um, and we, we're, we sort of, uh, talked a little bit about that, uh, this past week with regards to, uh, our consultant that's moving forward with the Rockwood, um, Terrace project and on, and that. And Andrew talked about that, uh, new funding, which thirty-five dollars, uh, per bed increase with the fifteen dollars that could be upfront cost that could go toward redevelopment. So a couple of things that I would like to see come back in the report was, is where is, uh, that, uh, proposal? But the idea, and it's always been, uh, the idea is just to, uh, add the wing on to the current Gray Gables as it is. And I know that, uh, uh, February of, uh, twenty-nineteen, it was decided by the previous council that, uh, a reversal of the decision to sell Gray Gables and it was turned around with, within the decision to keep Gray Gables. And at that time, it was felt and there was a few that made comments that if we're going to, uh, then keep Gray Gables, then we should be applying for more beds, which we did in, in, uh, trying to think, was it twenty-twenty, we applied for those beds and we were, uh, we received those new beds in November of twenty-twenty itself of this, of the additional sixty-two beds, making it to a one-hundred-and-twenty-eight bed facility, which the one-hundred-and-twenty-eight bed facility seems to be the right number in the sense of efficiencies. And we know people care and other, uh, private developers are also doing a hundred-and-twenty-eight bed facilities. That seems to be the sweet spot in the sense of that right number. So from that, and, and we all know that we were working with the Rockwood Terrace development along with, uh, coming forward with Gray Gables. And again, August twenty-six, it was decided from the body, from the majority of county councillors, that we would place Gray Gables on hold at that particular time. It wasn't cancelling or it wasn't changing it. It was placing it on hold until time county council wished to bring that back. Since then, we have, uh, new, um, nine new councillors around the county council table, which I think it's, it's sort of prudent to bring that information and the new information back to this body because it is on hold. And the other thing that's, uh, is pressing here is we know that the, um, the sixty-two beds that have been allocated for, uh, Gray Gables is on a bit of a timer in the sense that, uh, we, you know, if, uh, if we don't have a plan or move forward with a plan, we may lose those, those allocated beds to that redevelopment of, uh, of Gray Gables, which would be a shame to see because I know a lot of years, a lot of years, it was talked upon, uh, with Gray Gables that at that time, there was no mention of any new beds that could be available. And then lo and behold, that changed in two thousand and eighteen. Uh, the other point I want to raise is we know that from the Siena report around two thousand and sixteen, it did speak to, because at that time, county council was, was, uh, faced with an option of Rockwood, Gray Gables, and option number one is, was to move the hundred beds from, uh, Durham to, to, uh, Gray Gables. That's not the point I'm trying to raise. The point I'm trying to raise here in that report, that Gray Gables, because relatively a new building, had, um, a good infrastructure support a hundred beds. So this is where I'm, I'd like to see the information come back that if that report, the Siena report stated that it could, could, uh, handle a hundred beds, then it should have no problem accommodating the sixty-two, uh, as that fourth wing that would go, uh, onto that building. So there's a lot of information that would, would, would suggest that we could go just to the wing. And I think the bigger problem is we sort of found at, uh, August of twenty, August twenty-six, twenty-twenty-one was the infrastructure costs and the borrowing costs of doing a brand-new one-hundred-and-twenty-eight facility Gray Gables and then re-converting, uh, uh, the current Gray Gables into assisted living. I think the option of, of adding the wing, then you don't have that capital cost of looking at, you know, building sixty-six beds. That's not funded, but the funding is there for the sixty-two beds along with the increased funding, um, of this thirty-five dollars. Now, there is a letter I see in the correspondent that's coming up, uh, or consent agenda that, that did speak to the part that operators were required to complete and submit a statement of readiness from a template by December twentieth, twenty-twenty-two. And, uh, I had heard something about that from, uh, from an individual I know from a V H Care Ontario that mentioned something about that when I was at the Roma Conference. So here I, I see that, uh, it, there was information that was provided, uh, presumed to Gray County that said that you need to get that information in. So we are in February, so the clock is ticking to, to move that forward. And, um, one would, uh, maybe ask the question is, well, it says they have to be shovel-ready or it, it's sort of going into the ground in August of twenty-twenty-three. I would suggest that, uh, that would be something else that maybe could come back in the report that we have a follow-up with the Ministry of Long-Term Care to say, and it does speak in this letter that's on February third, that, you know, those that have been, uh, allocated, you know, beds, you need to be moving for it. So I think there's wording in that letter of, of February third that leaves a little bit of wiggle room that would allow us to still have conversations with the ministry. And I, you know, you know, the, the bottom line here, we do know that the provincial government does want to see long-term care builds, beds built in the province because, as we know, our hospitals have a large number of ALC patients that are in our hospitals and we know with our healthcare system and our emergency departments that, uh, there's a lot of, you know, hospitals running at twenty or twenty-five percent of ALC patients, the patients that can't go home. They're looking or sourcing out new beds. So uh, certainly open for questions or other comments, but, uh, basically today's, uh, notice of motion here is, is to support this resident, this notice of motion to come back from, uh, staff, uh, with a report and it sort of says in a, in a, you know, forwarded in a timely, comprehensive report with revised costing and, uh, for all options. So, uh, thank you, Mr. Warden, and certainly open for questions or comments.
Thank you, councillor McQueen. Councillor Mackey?
Thanks, Mr. Warden. Well, first of all, the, the timing of councillor McQueen's motion, I guess I, I struggle with a little bit. We're involved right now in a major redevelopment at Rockwood Terrace. There's, uh, just at our last redevelopment meeting, we had to tighten down some timeframes to meet the criteria uh, for this new funding that, uh, councillor McQueen spoke about. So I, I don't believe from a timing perspective, we could ever get to the point that we could redevelop or do any redevelopment at, uh, uh, Gray Gables to meet these timeframes. Um, secondly, financially, we, we haven't got the full financial picture on what Rockwood is going to, uh, be like. We are fortunate that we're getting an additional, uh, well, lump sum of money, which is going to help. But, uh, I think in the next month, we're getting more information back on what the actual redevelopment at Rockwood is going to take. So for those primary reasons, the other, I guess, is the capacity of our staff right now to put any more burden on our senior management team that are doing a redevelopment. I don't think they have that capacity right now. We need to focus on getting Rockwood done right and proper. And that's going to be, uh, you know, over the next year and a half. See where we end up with that, with the, the financials, uh, knowing what we can afford as a county, what our debt ceiling is. Um, for those reasons, I, I don't think, and I can't support, uh, moving forward with, uh, Gray Gables at, at this time. Up, up the road, I full, full support of, uh, Gray Gables have for a long time, continue to do that. I think the majority of this council believes in, you know, our three homes. Um, it's just how big, how fast is, is the question. So for those reasons, I can't support it at this time. I think we need to keep it certainly on our work plan, but now's not the time to add any increased burden to our staff. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Mackey. Anyone else care to comment? Councillor Nielsen?
Thank you very much, Warden Millen. So for myself, as a new member of the council today, it is with any decision the council makes, information is important. The request today is strictly to get information from staff to have a report come to this council so that the discussion can happen and, and we can decide as a body whether we're moving forward or not. Um, I don't think we're trying to sit here to say today whether or not Gray Gables is going to move forward. I think the question is strictly for information. Uh, information never hurts. Um, it helps us to, uh, understand the possibilities, the restrictions that could exist, as councillor Mackey is saying, but also if there's any opportunities to move forward. Um, so I do support the motion because today it's just strictly asking for a report for information.
Well, maybe, uh, what all councillor De Breen? Go ahead.
Thank you, Warden Millen, and good morning, County Council. I too am seeking more information. I realize that, um, bringing a report requires staff time. Um, a lot of the information may be available. One of my biggest concerns has always been is how long can we hold that allocation of sixty-two beds without losing them? If we snooze, we might lose. Um, so I'm certain, um, I'm certainly open to getting the information, but to understand what the ministry is saying about how long we can hold off making that decision. I understand that we're not making a decision as it relates to whether to keep or proceed with Gray Gables at this time, but to, to better understand the, the history behind it. Thank you.
Not to put too much of a point on it, but if anybody here knows what the ministry's thinking, I would love to talk to them because it's very difficult and understandably, they're in a difficult position as well, to be clear. I mean, they've made a commitment for all these new beds across the province. Uh, but the fact of the matter is that there's only so much capacity, whether it's engineering, whether it's construction, whether it's our staff time to bring reports back to this council. There's only so much capacity and we've got a lot going on. So with that, I'm going to ask him to, uh, comment. And the other thing I would point out too is, don't forget, we do have a long-term care redevelopment committee that is actively working on it. Councillor Matrasovs is just recently elected as the chair of that committee. And there's a lot of good information coming out of that committee and they're having good deliberations. So don't discount that. Um, but I'll ask him to, uh, comment, please.
Thanks, Mr. Warden. And, and just a couple of, of points of clarification. One was that when we made application to the ministry to do redevelopment at Gray Gables and Rockwood Terrace, we did those, those applications at jointly. Um, at that time, what was applied for in both instances was a campus of care. So there would be an additional, um, piece of work that would be required if we were, if we were looking to change the nature of our application away from being a campus of care to simply being an addition onto Gray Gables. I think, um, we would need to discuss that with the province because it's not the same project as the one that they approved. There's been, um, as everyone's aware, significant development, um, on that site and in working with Gray Bruce Health Services and the new hospital, um, that ensuring that there was an adequate footprint on the site to accommodate an addition as well as the, as well as a potential new build is something else that would take a bit of time. Um, I can say with, with complete confidence to this council that the current, um, accelerated funding that was announced at the end of November, there is no way, honestly, uh, there is just no way that Gray Gables could be ready to be able to access those funds because the requirement is that we have to have a fully tendered project approved by this council and into the ministry before the end of August. And a fully tendered project means that the design has to be all complete. There are a number of, of places in that process where the province goes through a very, very detailed review of what is being proposed and whether or not that sits, um, acceptable to them. We've been at this for the Rockwood build for months and months. And so it's just, it, it wouldn't be, it just wouldn't be possible to, to make that happen in that compressed timeline, mostly because the time that the province needs is completely out of our control. Um, so that, that, that hard date in, in August is, is, would be just a challenge that we couldn't surmount. That doesn't mean that there aren't, um, a ways forward or, um, future project at, at this site that we can, we can look at, um, and, and move forward from there. Uh, but, uh, as far as the specifics of, of this particular project at this particular time, I think we would be in a very almost an insurmountable situation.
Councillor Matrasovs?
Thank you. Through you, uh, the warden, to my, my fellow colleagues here at the county council table, I've heard from two other members who are also new like me, sitting at the table, asking, uh, who have advocated that this is simply asking for more information. It's asking for a report. I do think it's timely based on that. I do, I, I full and, and thank you very much, uh, uh, councillor Mackey for, for nominating me to, to chair the, the redevelopment, uh, long-term care task force. But I was very interested to join that because as you all know, we're working on a campus of care within the Blue Mountains as well. And from that process, I've learned how precarious it is when you have beds that have provisionally been floated or allocated to a particular body. So what concerned me when I was reading this is that to ask for a report to see where we are, not to hold up what's happening over at Rockwood Terrace. I, I do agree with the CAO that, that the timeline of trying to hit that mark to get that, the, the, the particular, uh, funding that's being dangled in front of us. My concern more though is to promote the idea that we get the report back. We see where we are. So the province sees the optics and the buy-in that we're still keenly interested in holding on to those sixty-some beds, um, because they do have that control. So we don't have control over how we can possibly put together our construction package that follows all the, the, the provisions that they have. But the province can look to it and say, here's a county who still has an interest in those remaining beds. They're already working on the one project. They're showing that they have buy-in on that. That is what I would like to be able to convey to the, the province. And within the report, it would allow us to ask that question. So, you know, the, the CAO brought forward about how if this is not in the form of a campus of care, is this something that could also solve the problem that the province wants to solve as much as we do in terms of where to allocate the beds? And that's why I think it's a reasonable motion to request information. I think it also sends a good message to the province at the same time.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Uh, see councillor Hutchison?
Thank you, uh, Mr. Warden and good morning, County, uh, Council. And, uh, just for clarity here, um, I'm reading this, uh, notice of motion several times. And I'm just curious, is this, is this that we're going to be, be applying for the beds or that, I don't, I can't get the clarity on that. I, I know we're asking for a report, but along that report, are we asking for additional beds? That's for my clarity.
Uh, good question. Uh, Kim, perhaps you'd like to speak to that?
Um, through you, Mr. Warden. Um, at the time we made application, the, um, the province approved, um, a full hundred-and-twenty-eight bed build at Rockwood Terrace and they approved another hundred-and-twenty-eight bed build at Markdale. Sixty-two of those hundred-and-twenty-eight beds would be new beds and would be funded. The remainder that are already Class A beds, the county would need to redevelop those with bearing the full cost.
Uh, thank you, um, Madam CAO. And so that, that does provide some clarity. So the, the report, like again, the source of motion, as far as I'm seeing is it's asking for, um, well, we're going to be asking for the, the additional sixty-two, but I, I think the, the concern I have here, well, first off, I think the past term of council, we were successful in maintaining Gray Gables as a county asset. And I think that was the biggest, uh, piece of work that happened there last term. So I think moving forward, I, I am, I'm concerned that, uh, one or two things, we do put this application, we're not going to, we, I don't see us hitting the, the deadline of August. One and two is, uh, by, by doing this and the uncertainty of the cost of the new Rockwood build, are we holding off another, uh, county or area in Ontario that is possibly shovel-ready? And where those beds need to get in as well. It's, you know, it's, we have the, it's a provincial funded, uh, grant money. And I think we're going to hold up the possibility somebody else getting it with the uncertainty where we're going. I don't think that's fair play throughout the province. So, uh, I, I support maintaining Gray Gables. I was having, I was well. I just don't know if we can take any more on. And, and I, again, I, uh, hear loud and clear what councillor Mackey said, and I agree with that. I think we're going to be stretching our staff to the max here to accomplish, um, this tight deadline. So I want, I can't support the whole motion, uh, parts of it I can, but I did, there's some parts that are not clear. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councillor Greg? So first question and then a comment. It was noted by a councillor or staff, something about a work plan. Where does it currently sit on the county's work plan? Touchy, touchy subject. I haven't seen even five and ten-year, uh, capital forecast yet as a new councillor. So, uh, I agree with councillor Mackey right off the bat. I, I'm not comfortable and happy that this is before us already and we're just undertaking Rockwood Terrace. But, uh, given we've uh, made an application, where does it currently sit on the work plan?
Through you, Mr. Warden. Um, when council took the decision to, um, uh, defer, um, any future work on Gray Gables, um, we have not proceeded to include any work on Gray Gables in our work plans. All of the funding that, um, has been available has been being put, set aside um, for redevelopment, that one-point-three-six million is being, has been allocated towards, um, the very significant cost of the, uh, Rockwood Terrace redevelopment.
Okay. So we made the application. We were granted conditionally the beds, but then we've just let it slide kind of off the radar for the time being. I just want to interpret that correctly. Like we have no plans to revisit this at all at this time.
That would be a council decision. It was council's decision to press pause on any future work at Gray Gables at that time. And that is, that is where the matter sits. Um, and should council wish to take a, a different decision, cat, staff will act.
Okay, so further, my comment would be to meet a deadline, which is not reasonable for us or a reasonable expectation at all, that we could meet a deadline here in August of this year. Before even trying to reach a deadline or committing yourselves to just making a deadline is not financially prudent means of conducting yourself in business. Uh, many examples would exist amongst municipalities where they rushed into shovel-ready projects and there's been funding thrown at them one-third, one-third, and then all of a sudden the local municipality is bearing a tremendous burden of cost that, uh, probably regrettably, they constructed. Um, so I am concerned with the timing here that we want to deal with this today. I am in full support of Gray Gables. You see the consolidation happening in the industry everywhere. There's efficiencies and economies of scale. So small home providers are struggling and that's not the way of the future. And you can be disappointed in that or you can be elated in that, but that's the fact. It's heavily legislated and regulated and it's expensive. So there's economies of scale that you have to reach and my interpretation of where you're at now is you've identified like one-twenty-eight is a more efficient scale to operate at. I believe the premier was in the building a year and a half or two years ago. He walked through Gray Gables. So you couldn't have more familiarity at a higher level than having the premier in your, in your bricks and mortar building. So I would make, I'm, I'm in support of it. I don't think we need to rush into this in four or five months. So I'm going to make a motion to postpone this to pending uh, completion of the issuance of tenders for Rockwood Terrace because one of the, I, one of my desires to sit on the ad hoc committee for redevelopment was to learn more about where we're at, uh, what we're getting into with Rockwood, um, with that new build and where financially it's going to lead us. So then we'll know, we'll have more information in terms of actual market conditions at play right now. It's not reasonable to think that we would undertake both builds at the same time. It's absolutely not. But I think once we have those fi, that financial commitment laid out before us, we are advancing that project, then we can have that discussion about the building was built for an extra wing. So we'll know what we're committed to Rockwood and maybe that extra wing makes sense. And that's the direction we go. And that's the conversation we have to recommit ourselves from the campus of care that was in the application and, and we just make it happen. Or we have the discussion at that time about, no, we, we maintain the status quo, but this, the campus of care. But I think the ideal time to have the conversation is after we issue the tender and we're fully aware of what we're committed to with Rockwood. So those are my comments. I've made that motion to postpone it this time. Jim, maybe?
Through you, Mr. Warden. I appreciate your comments, councillor Greg. Um, a slight tweak though, it might be beneficial to wait until the tender was closed because I think it's at that time that we're really going to have a good sense of exactly where the market is and, um, what the, the pool of general contractors is in the area and all that information would likely be very, um, useful. I will also say that, um, I think there would need to be some further conversation, not only about an addition versus a campus of care, just at the, a highest level, but whether or not, um, an additional wing with that the requirements, um, for the form of the build and exactly how things work are, they have evolved several times since Gray Gables itself was constructed. I, that's not what we asked for, and I would need to have clarity from the province to understand whether or not they would support an additional wing like that, like from a, just from a design perspective. to understand whether or not they would support an additional wing like that, like from a, just from a design perspective. So I just, I honestly don't know the answer to that question, so it is something that we would need to take some time and discuss with the province. Thank you.
Councillor Gregg, are you open to that suggestion? Just to clarify, that was my intention, was once that tender's closed, and I'm aware of that. Part two to the discussion there, that's direction that would be sent to you from council at the time, resulting from us having the discussion. I think that's the time to have the discussion. Okay, I'll take that motion. Is there a secondaire councillor? I need a secondaire first before we debate the the motion. Councillor Pringle. Okay, so the motion is to defer this motion, the motion that's on the floor, I guess. Defer that until the tender for Gray, for Rockwood is closed. Am I clear on that, councillor Gregg? Yes. So that's the motion that we're debating now. Councillor Mackey.
Thanks, Mr. Warden. I I would support that motion. When this came to council, when we were looking at the the dual developments, there were some staggering numbers provided to us from finance, numbers that the majority of council we took pause with. I would love to see an additional, you know, sixty-two beds down, down Gray Gables, but it's a Class A facility currently. Rockwood had to be redeveloped. So when we received the numbers, you know, in the debt ceiling that, you know, we're allowed to borrow, and we still don't know what those real numbers are gonna be at Rockwood. So I think it makes complete sense to get a financial handle on what our commitment to Rockwood Terrace is going to be before we take any steps at Gray Gables. The points that have been made around the efficiencies are absolutely correct. One hundred and twenty-eight bit bed facility is far better to operate, but there comes a price tag. It's still not free. And it's that overall limit that, you know, and what our taxpayers can bear is what concerns me right now. So I wanna bite off what we can chew right now before we take on too much more. So that's the, my primary, you know, reason for my stance. Thank you.
Councillor McQueen, I see your hand, but I'm gonna go to councillor Bartley first.
Thank you, Ward Millen. Just for clarity, to councillor McQueen. Councillor McQueen, are you looking for staff to come back with engineering, blueprints, tenders and everything by August? Or are you just looking for a report that gives the blessing from the province that we can do in addition? What exactly are you looking for?
Councillor McQueen, you want to respond to that?
Oh, thank you for that.
Bear in mind that we are debating the deferral.
Right. And so part of the reason where I brought this forward is, I think councillor DeBreen hit the nail on the head, is the status of these beds. Obviously, on November twenty-fifth, a letter was was submitted with regards to the opportunity for more funding. And it also, in the September eleventh, it said that we understand, and I may have the ability to say, as we are privileged community operators who require to complete and submit a statement of readiness for a template by December twentieth. So we were even supposed to have something in play on December twentieth if we were moving forward. So we didn't miss that deadline. I'm not saying we need to get shovels on the ground this year. What I'm trying to seek is clarity. Clarity in the sense, do, how, you know, can we keep the beds to a longer period till we get done the Rockwood development? Number two is, is there opportunities for this extra funding? It's just my worry is, and and as councillor Mackey said, the efficiency level of of anything is around one twenty-eight, up beneath these long-term care beds. So my worry is, is, and I think councillor Matasoff said it correctly, if we have a report and it's, because once the report comes back to this body, it's public, then we have something to go to the province and say, here's our conundrum. Here we, here's what we are faced with. And and all the good points that were raised this morning is, are 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 very well put in the sense of of taking on more than one project. It's, it's the, the concern is, is losing the beds. All this work and all the work we've done to to go with these beds. I mean, back in two thousand sixteen, seventeen, the suggestion was, do you think we ever get these, would ever get beds for Gray Gables? No, there's no chance, no chance. Well, it came. It came, and and not only that, we even brought Rockwood from a hundred to a hundred and twenty-eight because of the efficiency level of that number. So what I'm asking for today is not necessarily to say shovels in the ground by by August. I know we can't meet that deadline, but it's new information that we didn't have, and even new information that we didn't even have for the redevelopment of Rockwood. It's good news. We had that conversation, Andrew brought that forward last, on Tuesday with regards to redevelopment for for Rockwood. So it's good news. All I'm, all I would like to say is, is, is reports come back to suggest that here's what we are, and we take further steps to the province to say, Mr. Province, we're working on one project, we're interested in doing the other one, but we want to get our handle on the costs, as is said, suggested by councillor Greg. But it's just, it's, it, we're in, we're in no man's land right now because no person land, I guess I gotta make that politically correctly, correct. No person's land in the sense of where we are. I just want confirmation is, is from the province, because I think we'll be even worse off if we lose those beds. And and councillor Hutchison is correct, is, yes, there could be other, other areas in the province that would want those beds allocated, and we lose those beds. But I think we need to know where we are with the province with those beds, because I think if it comes back and says, Gray County, if you don't move with a plan, and maybe that plan is passed August thirty-first, and you're having a shovels in the ground, maybe it's August thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. But at least if we know from the province, if we are working towards something, they will hold the beds for us. And that's, that's the biggest concern I have is losing those beds. It's not saying we're gonna get shovels on the ground by August, but it's just new information that came forward. And could there be an option of doing the wing? Because the problem was, was the heavy cost of doing the full build. That's my point.
Okay, thank you, councillor McQueen. Kim, you had something to add there? No? Okay, councillor DeBreen?
Thank you, Warden Millen. I'll get it yet. I'm, I, deferring till when? My understanding is that the tender, tendering process isn't, has been pushed out to September eleventh in the new work plan timeline. So there's, there's information that the new nine members might not be aware of. It's it's clear. The C O has made it very clear that us meeting an August timeline for the additional funding is, is not in the works. But perhaps a not a complete campus of care is an option to move forward sooner. I'm not saying we're gonna move forward while we're still doing Rockwood Terrace, but without information, we don't have the ability to understand the whole picture. The other thing is, is I I'm a little confused by councillor Hutchinson's comment that we are applying for additional beds. We, we just want to hold on to the ones that were allocated to us for Gray Gables that we paused or that the previous council paused. So I'm, without a a clear picture of how long we're deferring this for and not having adequate information, I can't support a deferral.
I think the motion clearly said that the motion is to defer the decision on the notice of motion until the tender documents are finished, until that that process is done. We must have all of our work and shovels in the ground by the end of August. So the tender process will be completed prior to that.
Thank you. It's information that I didn't have. Thank you.
And I guess maybe this speaks a little bit to the fact that, you know, we do have a redevelopment committee that has been working ongoing for and for quite a little while now, as a matter of fact. And those minutes and those agendas are available to everybody. And you know, maybe that's the downfall of the standing committee, because that's almost what it is. It's a task force, I guess. But that information is available to all of council at any time. So I I I take issue when you say you don't know, because the information is there.
It was never intended to, to say that I wasn't reading the minutes, but they only just had a meeting on Tuesday, and there's information available that we haven't been provided at this time. So, you know, maybe we need a little handholding as new councillors. I'll, I'll be the first to admit it. I do read the minutes, and certainly I look forward to reading the latest ones.
Okay. So ironically, the deferral is to wait until we get more information. So I think what I'm gonna do now is I'm gonna, I'm gonna call the vote on the deferral. And if it fails, then we go back and we can have more discussion on what what we want to do with the notice of motion. So all those in favor of the deferral, please indicate. I'm gonna say that is carried. So the motion has been deferred, the notice of motion has been deferred until the tender process for Rockwood is complete.
Thank you, Warden. Mr. Warden, I'd like to call a recorder vote, please.
Okay, thank you very much. Madam Clerk, could you take the ball on that, please?
This is a recorded vote on the motion to defer. Councillor Mackey? Councillor Mackey is in favor. Councillor McKay? Councillor McKay is in favor. Councillor Carlton? Councillor Carlton is in favor. Councillor Pringle? Councillor Pringle is in favor. Councillor McQueen?
Opposed.
Councillor McQueen is opposed. Councillor Nielsen? Councillor Nielsen is opposed. Councillor Patterson? Councillor Patterson is in favor. Councillor Dickert? Councillor Dickert is in favor. Councillor Bartley? Councillor Bartley is in favor. Councillor Kevene? Councillor Kevene is in favor. Councillor Kepke? Councillor Kepke is in favor. Councillor Gregg? Councillor Gregg is in favor. Warden Millen?
Yay.
Warden Millen is in favor. Councillor Dobreen? Councillor Dobreen is opposed. Councillor Matasoffs? Councillor Matasoffs is opposed. Councillor Boarding Young?
Opposed.
Councillor Boarding Young is opposed. Councillor Echols? Councillor Echols is in favor. Councillor Hutchinson? Councillor Hutchinson is in favor. That motion carries sixty-eight to twenty-eight.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We've been going for about fifty-two minutes. Would anyone care for a brief recess, or shall we press on? I'm seeing some indication that they like a brief recess, so let's come back at eleven o'clock, and we'll reconvene. Thank you. So we have a delegation this morning. Uh, we have. The presenter is online, Alan Wisnewski. How'd I do with that?
You did good, actually.
All right, all right, I'll take that, I'll take that. So, uh, Alan is here to, to talk about, uh, Gray Road nineteen widening and the roundabout. So Alan, the floor is yours.
Okay, thank you. Hello, Mr. Warden and, uh, uh, county council members. So I apologize for not being, uh, present in person today. Kids' school bus gets, so I'm on double duty. Um, just wanted to thank you for reviewing our letter anticipation for this meeting and for letting us present today. Um, I'm going to present on screen the presentation that we put together that basically summarizes the letter. Uh, for us to walk through and then open up, uh, the discussion, uh, if that's how we'd like to proceed. So I'll just share my screen here. Give me a moment here. Okay, uh, so as, uh, Mr. Warden had mentioned, we're here to discuss the environmental assessment of Gray Road nineteen, uh, widening. Um, I'll just introduce myself. My name's Alan Wisnewski. I'm a, uh, new resident to Blue Mountain. Um, we moved here, I moved here with my, my wife and three children about two years ago. Uh, we chose the windfall development specifically. Uh, because of its location and it being a quiet residential community with a really strong focus on community and, and a, uh, uh, promoting a healthy active lifestyle. So we're, we're kind of situated directly across from Blue Mountain Resort, if many of you are familiar with that area. Um, it's a great area in terms of its trails and ecological system that's in place, so, uh, really was a strong draw for us for moving up here. Um, this is just gonna give you a snapshot of, of the location of the development and showing also the density of the residential development. Uh, you can see where the entrance is located directly off Gray Road nineteen. And this picture shows, I guess, three of the six developments that are currently under construction right now. Um, this again just shows a top view and kind of when we bought into the development, kind of showing how the subdivision was going to be laid out. Um, and it kind of showed that Crosswind Boulevard, you can see directly feeding in had, uh, stopped after phase five there. We were kind of told actually at the time that it was going to be a cul-de-sac, but we understand now it's, um, was actually planned to be an egress to connect to the village. Um, so while we're here, basically as a community, we've kind of submitted a petition and gathered over five hundred and sixty residents' names with serious concerns about the expansion plans for Gray Road nineteen. For some of the, uh, reasons that I mentioned. Um, our primary concern really is with the safety and well-being of the residents and children in the area. I think at the times for the, for the initial plan, um, this subdivision has changed drastically. Um, obviously with COVID and other measures, um, what was planned to be a uh, part-time seasonal development that might be used for weekenders has now uh, changed to be a pretty dense populated, uh, residential community with families. Um, and we have a lot of concerns with the, the, uh, the proposed road widening of Gray Road nineteen, which is going from two lanes to four, as well as a larger double roundabout at the entrance to our community, um, which will basically create a, uh, through traffic on our quiet street. Now, so this kind of shows the area that's in, um, consideration here in yellow. This is Gray Road nineteen. Um, from Osler Bluffs Road, you can see the first roundabout on the right. Um, and then you can see it's leading directly to the Gourd Canning Roundabout on the far left. Um, and we have concerns over the widening of this road. Originally, this was supposed to remain the same and be a si- uh, double lane road. Like, sorry, single lane road with a single lane roundabout. Uh, which I believe had been changed to now be double road just from that stretch. Uh, from Osler Bluff to Gourd Canning. Uh, and we just have concerns over, yeah, the expansion of that, obviously for many reasons. Um, which we'll go through in, in more detail. Uh, so these are some of our findings, which we can walk through quickly. This is all outlined in the letter. Um, so if you were able to read that, you can kind of read in more detail. Um, the first was there, uh, with this proposed plan that there is no active transport plan. Uh, we know that this is a big push from the MTO, um, right now in terms of trying to, to promote active transportation, active lifestyle. Um, and we're concerned that the, the, the proposed plan has no indication for, um, there to be lanes for cyclists and joggers. Um, and that is one concern, obviously, having such a dense community, uh, a residential community that there needs to be plans for hiking and biking and walking and cycling. And for people to do that in a safe way to try and eliminate more cars on the road rather than contribute. The second is insufficient traffic's, uh, safety studies. Um, I believe that obviously Gray Road nineteen runs through the resort area, uh, which typically is an area where people already currently speed trying to get to the resort. Uh, we're concerned with widening this road that it's only going to encourage more speeding um, and open up that small stretch, so people are going to be trying to actively go as fast as they can and possibly even use, uh, our development as a pass-through or shortcut to the village parking lot. Um, this, the third is insufficient traffic volume studies. I believe only that, that we found that the traffic data was collected from one date, um, specifically, um, when there is actually a lot more information, uh, for year-round studies that could be considered. Um, that we believe that, you know, yes, that it does get busy there at times, but it's not all the time. Um, so we find I want to try and consider that, um, that we, that we look into all different traffic volume studies from a, a longer period of time. Also insufficient traffic movement studies. Um, the proposed plan has widening the road to four lanes from, uh, from Osler Bluff over to Gourd Canning. But in the, uh, grand scheme of things, there are no other plans in, in neighboring um, municipalities to widen their roads. So it's kind of a, uh, I don't want to say useless exercise, but it kind of an interesting thing to have, you know, go from two lanes being fed into opening up to four and then going back to two. So we have concerns over that. And we're just wondering if we, if there are any studies that prove, you know, that, that four lanes would actually open up traffic. Also, uh, there are insufficient roundabout studies. We cannot find an active multi-lane roundabout placed in the entrance of a residential community anywhere. We did a lot of research. Obviously, you know, a one-lane roundabout centered on an existing two-lane road with active transport would be ideal. Uh, we did find some, uh, some articles in the Waterloo region who are quite progressive with their roundabouts. Um, and that the roundabout was ranked as the most dangerous road in the region three years in a row with these double, double-lane roundabouts, especially around residential and resort communities. Uh, then, and the Terry report filed, uh, solution to drivers' errors in multi-lane roundabouts. Uh, so there's also a lot of confusion with people that use roundabouts that aren't familiar with them, especially in a, in a, uh, resort area where people are coming from all over. Uh, this just illustrates some of the areas where a double-lane roundabout can cause errors and issues for people not understanding where lanes cross and merge. Um, so obviously this could pose a hazard, um, for leading into our development. Uh, because this roundabout will funnel traffic through our quiet, uh, street. Um, speaking of that, there's also insufficient egress studies. So we would recommend a study to best determine the positioning of some potential traffic lights along Crosswind Boulevard, which is uh, going to be the egress to connect to the village, because there's a lot more children and residents in the area, uh, year-round. Uh, we're concerned with people being able to cross the road safely, uh, because this is basically going to divide our development into two. Um, and we also have a community center that's kind of on the village side of, of the development a lot of people frequent. Um, it just makes it hard for people to be able to cross the street safely. Uh, we also would like to look into signage to be able to kind of direct traffic to not cut through the residential community as well as put up signage about residents only and children are at play. Um, so we'd like to look into traffic lights, stoplights, and, uh, possibly crosswalks to be included into the design proposal. Uh, this kind of just shows that this school bus drop-off right now for all of our community children is directly on this egress, uh, right at the mouth of it. So the bus is currently stopped and drops off all the children and picks them all up. And as you can see, they scatter uh, when they get off the bus. And presently, my daughter was almost hit the other day trying to cross the street. She didn't look where she was going and just that, that is a concern that children are always aware, no matter how much we tell them, they're not always aware of, um, you know, the rules and traffic. Uh, we're also concerned about the road. Obviously, we got a lot of snow up here. Um, the lanes often get covered, so if we're gonna have a large double-lane roundabout, those lanes aren't always gonna be visible. So you can see this shows tour buses piling in. Uh, and if they can't see where the lanes go and where they're supposed to go, they might just direct themselves through our, our development rather than going straight through to the village parking lots. Um, so it makes it a bit dangerous not having lane markings. The others, obviously, the speed signs. Uh, we're concerned about speeding and oftentimes the plows can cover the speed signs and you can't see um, how fast or how slow they could be going. Obviously, people are looking to get there as fast as possible, so that could always be an excuse. As well as wayfinding signage, if we wanted to have signage to try and direct traffic uh, directly past rather than through our development, it's gonna be hard to see sometimes visibility. Uh, additionally, there's also insufficient drainage studies. We're concerned with widening the road to four lanes. That's gonna be a lot of more excess water and flooding issues. Uh, we already have issues with flooding, especially obviously in springtime, you know, when the snow is melting off the mountain. Um, our water drainage ponds are already at capacity and filled with a lot of debris and dirt and salt, um, that need to be pumped out regularly, which affects the wildlife. Um, so we're just concerned about this extra amount of water runoff and just make, want to make sure that it's being considered in the plan. Um, as well as the loss of green space. Obviously, we're, you know, we have a, a nature trail that runs along Gray Road nineteen. With the proposed double road widening, it's actually gonna come up directly right next to our trail system. Uh, which, uh, many of us use daily and we're just concerned again about safety and road noise. Um, as well as losing some of the canopy that we currently have along the tru- that, along the road. Which also affects the, the road noise for, for the residents that back onto the road. Uh, so obviously our concerns here are quite simple. It really is just really about safety, community safety. Um, so, you know, we're worried about encouraged speeding from the four-lane highway. The increased danger from having a two-lane roundabout right at the entrance of our, of our community. Um, obviously, the children's school bus drop-off and pickup location. Um, there's no active transport planned for cyclists to, to, to travel around safely. Um, there's also reduced sightlines and visibility for pedestrians with a larger roundabout. Um, no opportunities for crosswalks currently for people to cross safely. Um, and the egress will obviously encourage people to short, to take a shortcut through Crosswind Boulevard um, to get to the village and bypass another roundabout. The other, obviously, the environmental impact, uh, the excess water runoff that I mentioned, wildlife crossing. Um, that happens quite frequently with deer and other birds and animals. Um, increased noise pollution from the four lanes and, and speeding traffic, as well as the loss of trees and trails. Um, the third is, is just a concern for the master plan of just understanding the growth of this community and of the area in general. Um, the insufficient studies that, uh, may be dated, maybe not insufficient, but a little bit dated. Um, and the data needs to be concerned, uh, considered to be a little bit more up-to-date, um, as well as addressing these problems uh, through the design, uh, proposal. Uh, so our ask as a community, obviously, we fully support a, a roundabout as they are proven to move traffic quite, quite well. Um, you know, but obviously we would be more inclined with having a single-line roundabout as per the initial proposal. And we would ask council, uh, not approve the current environmental assessment um, and pause it to do further studies and help understand how this community has changed and how we, um, as, as residential, um, members are concerned about safety. Um, and that we ask that, that be considered during the design process so that um, all of these considerations can be made, uh, during the design process so that we can have the best, um, solution. Um, so our ask, obviously, considering resident safety, please consider the original two-lane road as opposed to four. Uh, please consider original, single-lane roundabout as opposed to a double. Uh, please consider active transportation being added to the plan. Uh, please consider permanent stop signs and traffic lights along Crosswind Boulevard to try and deter traffic from cutting through. Um, please consider egress, uh, also have, um, narrowing lanes again to kind of slow traffic. Um, and adding wayfinding signage along Gray Road nineteen to direct tourists to not cut through the, the development, but try, try and continue through Gourd Canning where they're supposed to, to be in the proper lots. Uh, so I guess in summary, again, our concerns are mainly with the multi-lane roundabout at the entrance of our community with six hundred and fifty-nine homes is, is, we find it very unquestion- are very questionable. Um, obviously, there are a lot of concerns with, uh, with this roundabout and having to, for us, having to try and get out of our developments safely. In the, eh, in the region of Waterloo, for the past two decades, of traffic collision information available. Um, we found that, uh, through its first twenty-nine days of operation in twenty-eleven, they have thirty-four collisions, more than one per day. Um, actually, a young girl was hit, uh, right after it opened, and the family had sued the region because of this was not considered. Um, so the positioning of a multi-lane roundabout, we find is very, uh, unacceptable at the mouth of a residential community. Obviously, active transport, we, we spoke about. Uh, and also, obviously, the traffic's, uh, study data. Um, that this area has cha- demographics have changed since then, and we could ask that, that be considered. Yeah, thank you. Yeah, so we just wanted to thank you and wanted to open up the discussion to see if there's, uh, possibility to pause uh, and not approve the current environmental assessment and to try and have our considerations heard, uh, for the design process.
Well, thank you, Alan, and certainly the, uh, we appreciate your, uh, your input here. Uh, the purpose of the delegations, of course, is not to get into full-on debate about merits of anything in particular. But it is to bring your concerns forward. So if there's any questions from council, uh, regarding clarity on what the ask is or the concerns are, we certainly want to hear those. If there are any questions. I'm not seeing any questions, so what I'm gonna say is thank you very much for your information, Alan. It's very thorough. There's a lot there. Your concerns are heard, and I'm sure our staff will take them forward, uh, when they consider, uh, next steps, because, uh, there are a number- Uh, next steps because, uh, there are a number of. More steps to be considered before the project actually, uh, begins. So again, thank you very much, Alan. And we appreciate your time.
Thank you.
So moving on, uh, their next item of business is to determine those items for further consideration. Uh, was anyone, there's. One item, uh, that corresponds from the Ministry of Long-Term Care. Um, Counselor McQueen. You'd like to have that removed for further discussion?
Yes, please.
Okay, thank you very much. Well, there's only the one item, so we don't need to go any further. I don't, uh, we need it, we don't need a motion to do that, do we? No. Nope. So we'll, uh, we'll press on then through, we'll deal with that. At the end of the meeting, we'll come back and have that, uh, that discussion. Items for direction and discussion. The first one is the, uh, report from Kevin McNabb. Our paramedic services director, Kevin, the floor is yours. Oh, I need a mover in a second to, to, uh. Counselor Eccles, Counselor Nielsen, thank you very much. Kevin?
Clicking off here. Good morning. Uh, so, uh, this morning just want to talk about, uh, report, uh, CW zero-three-twenty-three regarding the sole source purchase of ambulances. Uh, for twenty-three and twenty-four. Uh, requesting that the purchase of four ambulances be sourced, sole sourced from Demir's ambulances. And that staff go authorize to order two of these ambulances of four in twenty-twenty-three. That are scheduled for replacement twenty-two, twenty-four. And that, uh, we give permission to act prior to council approval to move forward on quote. So the Ministry of Health, they, uh, regulate, uh, who are vendors for ambulances in the province. Uh, there for many years, uh, Demir's and Crestline. Uh, have been the vendors that are approved for sale. Of ambulances in Ontario, Demir's is out of Quebec and, uh, Crestline is out of Saskatchewan. In two thousand and eighteen, uh, Demir's and Crestline and actually accompanied in states called Braun. Announced an amalgamation of their company, it's not really one company, uh, going forward. So even though they merged, they still offer a crestline in Demir's vehicle, but at the end of the day, it's still one company. So it does, uh, cause some issues around our competitive bid process. Uh, they still continue to build their individual designs, so Demir's and Crestline, they'll put it on most likely a Ford or, or, or Chevy or. They do have Mercedes chassis. And, uh, but outside of that, the box themselves are more or less kept with those same traditional designs. Over the years, we've standardized our fleet, uh, working hard at mostly since two thousand and twelve. There was a report for five years. And another report where we went back out to RFP in two thousand and seventeen for five years. And then last year we, we did a, a tender. But, uh, we, we tried to standardize the fleet mostly for, uh, paramedics in an emergency. They know exactly where the equipment is, the cabinets are the same. In the, uh, equipment store in the same spot. It also, uh, really helps with maintenance and repair. We can keep supplies in stock and, uh, just familiar with the vehicles and. I always seem to give it a plug here, but it's well worth it. The mechanics that we have are second to none. And, uh, they do such a great job at maintaining our vehicles and. Really appreciate that, but I think having that standardization helps. We have a ten-year capital plan to replace vehicles, so, uh, or. We have plans out ten years. Ambulances are in a rotation of six years. Uh, we have fifteen of them in our fleet. The way it usually works is there's four years, more or less at their frontline. And two years when the kilometers get higher, uh, they, they, uh, become spare trucks. Uh, through COVID, we've seen difficulties with supply chain issues, not just in vehicles, but pretty much every device or piece of equipment or supplies we carry. And also with that, we've seen substantial. Cost increases, um. The mayor's bra and crest line, they reached out to us this year. And, uh, I was hoping that the supply chain correct itself, at least get better, but it hasn't. Uh, they're still looking at a twenty-month, month. Replacement, so anything that we order now, uh, will, will probably not be here till October twenty-twenty-four. And, uh, to give you an idea, I believe it was February or March of last year and we're getting. And we'll says that we should have got last year, October of this year. So the idea is just really to try to get ahead of that. We are, we are more or less behind a year. Um, but with also with this, uh, we have seen price increases, uh, since twenty-twenty-one. It's been a forty percent increase in price of our vehicles. Um, and, uh, the quote they gave us, uh, even though we can capitalize for, move ahead before the end of this month. Um, uh, like there's, there's going to be an increase in the spring. I guess if we don't act now, they'll. They'll end up doing their, their normal yearly increase in March. They're not going to issue any more quotes for a period of time. And, uh, so we're trying to get ahead of it, but even then. They still don't guarantee this is the price. Uh, because of, uh, if the chassis goes up or if the power load goes up. Uh, those type of things are the. Uh, the index that they use for increases that may be higher than what we think. So, uh, but it, it at least gives us a ballpark and try to get in. As, as cheaply as we can. Um, so what we're trying to do is, uh, we're, we've asked permission to sole source these vehicles. And then the approval to order twenty-twenty-four vehicles this year when we place this year's order for twenty-twenty-three, which will get us back in line. With receiving them. I hopefully I don't have to, but I may have to come back next year to order twenty-five to twenty-four, but at least we'll be ahead of the cycle next year. And then also just, uh, to be able to get a, issue a P O before the end of the month without going through county council, uh, that's the last part of the motion. So, uh, different times, uh, definitely not in a comfortable position around vehicles because. With only one vendor, it's, uh, difficult. You pretty much have to, uh, order them and that's what you get and that's what you pay. So, uh. Take any questions?
Thank you, Kevin. Are there any questions? Counselor McKay?
Yeah, just a rough idea. What does a unit cost nowadays?
Is, is two fifty-six, eight sixty-six. Not that long ago, there were a hundred and eighty-three.
Cool quarter million. Any other questions? Not seeing any, I'll call the. Not seeing any, I'll call the question. All those in favor? That is carried. Thank you, Kevin. Next item is, uh, regarding Lutheran Social Services Rapid Housing Initiative, Anne Marie is going to address this, so. And Marie, oh, I need a mover in a second for this, please. Counselor. Nielsen, Counselor Eccles.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. This report is, um, about the development of forty affordable housing units in Owen Sound. Lutheran, uh, social services is looking to apply to the rapid housing initiative through the Canadian Housing and Mortgage Corporation. Uh, the Affordable Housing Task Force approved three million dollars towards this build. Uh, in capital funds and, uh, in order to apply for the funding through the, through CMHC. Um, there has to be some sort of ongoing subsidy from, uh, the service manager, which is ourselves. Uh, so we are asking that we look at a different way in using the three million dollars. We'll use one point six million dollars upfront as capital. Because there is a requirement of at least a million dollars upfront in capital. And then the remaining funds would be used, um, for operating subsidy over the next twenty years. Um, we have nine nonprofits in which we provide an operating subsidy right now, um, through our housing services, uh. And, uh, act and, uh, that provides us over, I think it's around five hundred and fifty units of, of, uh, housing. So we would add this, um, to our nonprofit list, uh, and we would use the one point four million dollars over the next twenty years in order to subsidize. Um, so the applications are due, uh, I believe it's the first week of March, so that's why I'm also asking that this be approved. Um, before the next council meeting in order to meet those deadlines. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Anne Marie. Are there any questions? Counselor Bartley.
Thank you, Warden Millen. On page forty-eight, it shows that you're. Taking six hundred thousand dollars, you're withdrawing from the Fourteenth Street Supportive Housing Project. Is that the new? Project that's under construction on Fourteenth Street and Fourth Avenue?
You are correct. That is the one that is, I'm terrible with streets, so it's one over by our high-rise by the Legion. Um, on Fourteenth Street. So Fourteenth and Fourth might be, uh, might be right. It is currently under construction.
That concerns me. It's, it's a really good project. That's a project where they're going to take people. That are homeless and transition them into. Being part of life and I, and I really concerns me that we're withdrawing funds from that.
Through you, Mr. Warden, we're not withdrawing funds from that. Those funds are also going to come from the Affordable Housing Fund. Um, so it's just showing another funding that's coming out of that fund. So we wanted to make sure that those funds are included. Um, so it's not taking away from the funds at all. There's enough in that fund to do both.
Any other questions? Oh, Counselor Mackey.
Thanks, Mr. Warden, and through you. Thanks very much for the report. Just wondering what the, uh, the square footage size of the one-bedroom apartments would be, and I guess my question stems from, you know, we're looking at tiny homes and. The size of some of, uh, the condos now in the cities are, you know, four or five hundred square feet. And is there an opportunity in these new builds to reduce the size? Uh, so that we can have more of them. Thanks.
Um, the average build right now for a one-bedroom that we've been looking at and through this is around four fifty to five hundred square feet. I don't have it exactly. They're still sort of in that development, um, but that is certainly something that they looked at originally. I think they were looking at thirty-five units and have added it to forty. So I'm assuming that there was some cost. There, so thank you.
Counselor Eccles.
Uh, thanks for the report, Anne Marie. The three million dollars and or the, the subsidy. That's just, uh, flow-through money from the province to do that. Certainly that's not levy tax dollars that's going into that.
That is from our Affordable Housing Fund. So yes, it is. It is the one percent of funding. So it is a mix. Um, there is, um, some one percent funding in which we was committed by council, previous council. And there's also, um, some funds in there from some, um, proceeds from the sales of some of our, um, older housing units.
Well, if I could, Mr. Warden, just a little bit more. We are supporting, uh, affordable housing tremendously now. I think Warden made mention of it, something about, uh, one of the ministries. There is the Ministry, uh, of Housing. Understand, uh, Bill twenty-three, the way it's developed and whatnot, and how much more pressure that's going to put on. Not only, uh, Gray County, but lower-tier municipalities on, uh, financing. The province's, uh, grandiose scheme of building housing. And did they ever take into account how much? The property taxpayers, not only of Gray County, but of Ontario are already doing that?
Interesting conjecture, but I'm not sure it's relative to the motion in front of us, Counselor Eccles. Do you have a question related to the motion?
The question would be. How much more do we do on this, I guess? Is this the end of what we see of it or our expectations? And how much further down the rabbit hole does this take us?
So with this particular program, it's actually through the feds. So it is Canadian Mortgage and Housing Corporation. And they will be paying, um, the majority. So we would pay the one point six million dollars towards the build. But it does pay a significant portion up to one hundred percent of the remaining cost for the capital. Um, but as we know with affordable builds, in order to keep the rent low. There has to be an operating subsidy too, in order to make sure that that part of it's covered. So, um, with this program, it's actually a good program. Um, and, uh, if successful, then there won't be any ongoing capital burden on us. Um, as for the provincial province, the province right now, um, there's not a whole lot of funds available for the problems for building.
Any other questions? Not hearing any, I'll call the question. All those in favor? That is carried. Thank you very much. Moving on to the next two reports will be, uh. From Jen Morrow, our Director of Human Resources. Welcome, Jen. Floor is yours. Oh, I need a mover in second, sorry. Counselor. Carlton and Counselor Patterson. Mental block there for a second, but I got it. I got it. Thank you. Jen?
Uh, good morning, Mr. Warden, members of county council. Uh, so first I'm speaking to our Opsu Social Services negotiated settlement. This report is before you to ratify a three-year collective agreement with our social services employees. The social services bargaining unit is comprised of forty-one unionized staff members who support our early learning. Childcare and Ontario Works programs. The terms of the collective agreement are for three, three years, January first, twenty-twenty-two to December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four. And included in the report that you have in your package are the agreed-to items that include monetary adjustments. Benefit enhancements and updates to the language within the agreement. We are asking council to ratify the agreement and authorize the clerk and the warden to sign the ratification of the agreement. To bind the county to the terms of the agreement. Do you have any questions for me?
Any questions, counsel? Counselor Greg.
Thanks, Warden Millen. I have, uh, a question, the financial implications. Um, in the report. Do they consider the increase in vacation? Allotment and the requirement to backfill those positions, or is it somewhat of a rec? Recognition that there is excess capacity in that. Department, uh, in its entirety to be able to, um. Migrate there.
Uh, through you, Mr. Warden, the cost of the vacation replacement hasn't been included in the report. Uh, as you said, um, there's a recognition that there is capacity within the department, but the actual, um. Replacement isn't being costed.
Any other questions, counsel? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? That is carried. Thank you very much. Jen, uh, I should get to carry on. Sorry, Jen, I need a mover in second here. Counselor Dickard and Counselor McKay, thank you.
So this report, the secondary, second report that I'm speaking to is before you to ratify a two-year collective agreement with our Rockwood Terrace Long-Term Care Home. Uh, Unifor Bargaining Group. The bargaining group is comprised of a hundred and forty-nine unionized staff members that include personal support workers, commonly known as PSWs. Registered Practical Nurses, commonly known as RPNs. Food service workers, cooks, recreationists, housekeeping, maintenance and laundry workers. The terms of the collective agreement are for two years, February first, twenty-twenty-three to January thirty-first, twenty-twenty-five. And included in the report are the agreed-to items. Uh, including monetary adjustments, benefit enhancements, updates to the language within the collective agreement. And we're asking council to ratify the agreement and authorize the clerk and warden to sign the ratification of the agreement to bind the county to the terms. Of the agreement. And again, I would just ask if there are any questions for me regarding the particulars within the report.
Thank you, Jennifer. Any questions? Counselor Mackey.
Thanks, Mr. Warden. Jennifer, the previous report and this report. We've got a number of different unions, you know, and bargaining units through the, the county. Will this be the new threshold with the, you know, the changes to benefits that we can likely expect through? Future negotiations?
Uh, through you, Mr. Warden, uh, you could expect to see the same type within our sector of long-term care. Uh, when we look at each bargaining unit, we have nine bargaining units within the county. And when we look at the comparisons, we look at the previous twelve months within their sector comparisons, uh, within the same, um. Sector of long-term care with our different bargaining units. So it'd say you can anticipate seeing the same type of settlements within long-term care. Um, but that might completely differ when we come back to you and we are speaking about our registered nurses, so ONA. Or paramedics or QP, uh, we look at, um, market-to-market replicated awards. Um, but we look at them as a sector. So social services is a different sector than long-term care, which is a different sector than QP and so on.
Thanks, Jennifer. So when we're looking at sector comparators, so. Thanks, Jennifer. So when we're looking at sector comparators, so if we look at long-term care, are we looking at the hospital as a comparator? Who, who are the comparators or is it other county long-term care facilities?
Through you, Mr. Warden, we look at long-term care homes as our comparator. So across the province, we would look at both privately owned and municipally owned providers. So those are our comparators. So for instance, in this regard, we had a major settlement award arbitrated that we look to called the Stout Award that was awarded within the last six months that kind of set the pace for what long-term care homes can expect to receive, either if they bargain at the table or if they as well go to arbitration. We were lucky enough to be able to settle this at the table with our group.
Any other questions? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? That is carried. Thank you, Jennifer. Our next report is regarding the Beaver Valley Sustainable Tourism Strategy. Savannah Myers, our Director of Economic Development, Tourism and Culture is online. Is someone willing to move that? Councillor Nielsen, councillor Pringle. Savannah, welcome.
Hello. Thank you so much. Can you hear me okay? Yep, awesome. Okay, perfect. Good morning, county council. Happy to be here and bring you an update about the Beaver Valley Sustainable Tourism Strategy that we are just kicking off. So we wanted to bring you an update as to how we got here and where we're hoped to head over the next year as we take those very first steps. So as you know, and we're very proud of, Gray County is a renowned four-season tourism destination and we've become very popular over the last couple of years. We saw that popularity beginning pre-COVID and it has only exacerbated throughout the pandemic and we do not anticipate that's going to turn around. So it's something that we need to start preparing for. One of the pieces, you know, that's so critical to this study and the strategy is looking at how do we mitigate the current and future impacts and strategically position the Beaver Valley corridor. So beginning in Flesher Town and going right up to Georgian Bay, which we know is one of our region's most popular tourism drivers, but also a UNESCO biosphere reserve. How do we together with our partners come up with a long-term vision and plan and initiate some first steps over the next couple of years to get us to where we want to be? So what we've done, and this has been ongoing for a little while in terms of trying to get the project started, we did apply for funding in April of 2021 and we were fortunate to receive provincial funding in August of 2022 to be able to do this study. And we brought partners together. So we have Gray County, Municipali of Gray Highlands, Town of the Blue Mountains, RTO7, as well as the province at the table to be partners and lead partners in this project. We have awarded the study to Bannakin, who we have worked with in the past, and we've got great confidence in their ability to engage our stakeholders and really kind of dig into where do we want to go as a region. And that's why I think why it's so important to look at the Beaver Valley corridor and first and foremost, knowing that it is so popular and that we need to prepare because right now we do not have the visitor amenities or tourism infrastructure. We don't have any consistent branding. We have no positioning. There's confusion because there are so many landowners, both public and private, different user groups and land stewards around what, whose role and responsibility is it to develop tourism in the area in a strategic way? So that we are market-ready when people get here. Right now, we certainly have a conflict between tourists who are coming and the visitor experience they have and the residents and the businesses who are are being overwhelmed by tourists who don't know where to go. So that is something that we're trying to accomplish through this study. So today, you know, we're just kicking things off. We are in the, the planning phase at this moment. And the next kind of long-term phase, what we'll spend a lot of time on is stakeholder engagement and pulling people together. So in the next couple of weeks, you'll start to see information coming out about that. We will have a page on our website where we can hold information and pull everything together so that everything, you know, is in one spot and easily accessible. Because we know there's a lot of vested interest in development of the Beaver Valley or non-development. So we need to look at both sides and how do we balance it? So that we're building our sustainable strategy for and with community, being able to balance preserving our nature, but also finding the right development in the right places to support our region and economic diversification. So today, we are looking to, you know, understand, really understand the corridor and what its potential is to gather a ton of insight and feedback from a diverse group of stakeholders. We'll be looking at, you know, our strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, challenges for the Beaver Valley, but also regions elsewhere and what they've gone through. And then looking to co-create a sustainable tourism strategy that has that long-term vision. So we're thinking, you know, 25 years from now, where is it that we want to be? And then over the next three years, what are those first steps that we can take to accomplish that vision? That is really what this project is going to be setting out to do. And then through that, establishing clear understanding of the rules, responsibilities and resources required for implementing the actions identified. So we really truly believe that timing is critical for this project at this moment. Our partners recognize the importance of the Beaver Valley as one of Ontario's most iconic natural splendors. But we have several factors that are informing, you know, the needs and timelines of the project. So significant visitor growth in recent years, planned redevelopment of significant properties, infrastructure and space constraints and challenges related to the corridor and municipal services visitor volume. So I think the one kind of common ground that everybody has is status quo just isn't an option. We need to do something and we need to do it now so that we can set ourselves up for a successful future. So we will be looking to mitigate those negative visitor impacts and resident conflicts by strategically planning for the future. So as I mentioned, we're just in project implementation. We kicked things off in January. And later this month into next month, we will just start the research and engagement piece and that is going to be a long process. So this project will not wrap up until end of the year. We'll have lots of market research opportunities and we'll definitely be back to council with further updates as we move along through this. The same both Gray Highlands and Town of Blue Mountains councils, because we think it's really important. If we're all at the table together, let's keep everybody updated and aware. So that is the update on our Beaver Valley Sustainable Tourism Strategy and happy to take any questions that council might have.
Thank you, Savannah. And I just, I just love your reports because after you're done, I just want to go screaming out the door. Yeah, let's go. Holy mackerel. Anyway, councillor McQueen, I see your hand up.
Well, you could still go screaming out the door. Um, yeah, thank you, Mr. Warden, and thank you for that report. Beaver Valley is comprised of a big part of the Nagger Skartment Plan. And I just wondered in your relationship with the Nagger Skartment itself and sometimes barriers pop up through the Nagger Skartment Plan. And it's, I think for all the stakeholders, it would be good or at least have them understanding what you're doing so that they can better relate because I know that sometimes it comes into conflict. So I just wonder depth, how, how that relationship will move forward in the sense of having them as a stakeholder or what's your thoughts on that?
Sure, through you, Warden. They will certainly be a stakeholder. They are one of the groups who are part of that, you know, multiple public-private landowner user group, land steward. So that's where we, we certainly see their role. So they will absolutely be part of the stakeholder consultations and interviews. Yes, they'll be at the table.
Just to follow up with that, I know in the sense of stakeholders, they're more or less, because it is a provincial plan, they're more or less the stakeholders of the provincial plan itself. So it's just in a sense, hey, and maybe some softening will happen in there as well as a bit of a, you know, moving, moving forward in the sense of things that can happen in a sense. I mean, I've always maintained that the Nagger Skartment itself is to enjoy and to see. And, you know, part of that tourism part. So how does that work? And I think, I think there is a relationship there that can work wholeheartedly and just look forward to the, to be moving forward. So thank you, Mr. Warden.
Thank you. Councillor Matrasovs.
Thank you. Through you, the warden. This is excellent timing and, and we are very supportive over at the Town of Blue Mountains to also receive it at our own council table because it correlates so well with some of the stress and strain we're currently, as many of you are dealing with, with unsafe parking practices and people ignoring the no parking provisions that we put out there. And, and because they don't have that coordinated strategy, as Savannah has mentioned, you know, they're not sure where to go park next or go hike next. So this, this lot's full. Now I should move on to another one. So it really lands itself very well as a, as a full-on county activity because visitors or people who, who live within the area won't stop at the, at the municipal boundary and, and stay within one or the other. It really does need that coordinating. So my question is, is, is I, I heard reference to that Gray Highlands is also on board and, and ready to participate as stakeholders. But the other stakeholders that I wanted to ask where they fit into the process is the actual province as opposed to the Nagger Skartment Commission because so many of our parks are actually provincial parks. So that's one question. The conservation authorities are also very much involved, I'm sure. But also our neighboring municipality of Meeford too, because if we're going to be promoting the fact that we are a working agricultural region that has this specialty agriculture devoted towards apples and I drive past that giant apple in Meeford every time I'm on my way home from here. So I'd really like to hear that we have a collectivity there among our, our three municipalities in the Beaver Valley area.
Sure, through you, Mr. Warden. The province will certainly be one of the stakeholders that we are talking to. I guess I shouldn't say one of the stakeholders. There are many provincial areas that we'll be wanting to talk to you through this. So it's the Ministry of Tourism that has funded this program for us to be able to, you know, leverage the dollars we have, but we will also be talking and we have in the past talked to Ontario Parks and MNR as well. So they sit as part of our outdoor management group, who is one of the stakeholders that will be part of this project. So certainly they will be there. The municipality, we haven't reached out to Meeford directly at this point only because of where the geography is, but they will, all of our municipalities are going to be a stakeholder because every piece of tourism impacts right across the county. So that is something that we haven't got to yet, but they, when we are doing the consultations and the one-on-one interviews, they will be a piece of that as well. And then the question about conservation authorities, yes, absolutely. All conservation authorities, different land stewards, people like the Skartment Biosphere Conservatory or we know there are friends of Beaver Valley and all of those types of individual groups who really see a role for them because they do have such a vested interest in the area. So we think that they can also bring a good perspective for us in terms of, you know, where do we go next and how do we achieve a vision together?
Thank you for that answer. Through you, the warden, that, that is just my hope is that we look beyond the geographical connotation and we consider very much the social, cultural, the agricultural heritage that we all share, all three of our municipalities share in that area. It's something for us to celebrate together and I look forward to, to working in partnership.
Councillor Keveney.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and I want to thank councillor Matrasovs for suggesting Meeford. And we certainly would love to be any part of this that we can, Savannah, recognizing that we have our harbor. We are the apple capital of Ontario. We have our scarecrow invasion in Meeford Hall and, and lots of tourism activities. So overflow does find us. We know that there are no borders and that tourists do come from Blue Mountain and and come forward to experience our area as well. So my question for you, somewhat related, I think, as you go through this study and build awareness for this area and the wonderful opportunities that there are here for tourism and culture and arts and so on. Are you hopeful that going through this process will also help our businesses with their challenges in finding enough staff? Do you think that what you're doing may help encourage more people to come up into this area and to see the opportunities that there are to, you know, live, work and play here? And just wondering what your thoughts are on that.
That is a great question. I think that the study and the work that's going to be done through the consultation and, you know, through developing a real strategic plan will give us guidance for where we need to go in terms of additional training or labor force type of recruitment and retention. I think it will help us better understand the needs that we have now and where we will go in the future. In terms of what, you know, any type of development or not looks like, I couldn't answer that at this point because we're hoping it's through this study that we will determine what does that look like? What do we really want to be and resource-wise? What can we fully, you know, accommodate? So we will get to those answers, but I would be too premature in, in providing you any further direction on that at this moment. But workforce certainly is always the piece of the puzzle going forward because that is a main resource that we would need to be able to sustainably function as a, as a region.
Okay. Thank you. Councillor Nielsen.
Thank you, Ward Mill. Just a comment from myself. So Gray Highlands undertook a significant community engagement around Beaver Valley and tourism and sustainable tourism. Leaving 2021, working with the planning partnership and I'm, I'm excited to see this because I do believe as kind of been mentioned that, you know, the Beaver Valley corridor is a lot longer than the boundaries of one of our municipalities that make up Gray County. So just a quick question for Savannah is, will Bannakin be reviewing kind of all the data that exists currently from different municipalities in, in conjunction with creating their own action and strategy plan as well as kind of utilizing that information to know members of the community who might be worth reaching out to in terms of that stakeholder engagement?
That's through you, Mr. Warden. Absolutely. They are on a real data dive right now and you have done a lot of work as, you know, the municipality in terms of what that vision looks like for yourselves. So that was one of the base documents that went to the group as well as a lot of the UNESCO Heritage Work and RTO7's strategies and our Gray County strategies as a whole. And then in terms of the consultation, we are looking to be able to talk to residents and landowners and businesses and visitors and even in some cases, you know, people who aren't visiting the area and why. So that we understand who the real markets are and who is that we should be targeting. You know, one of the conversations we've had with a couple of the groups who are already expressing interest in, in being at the table for these consultations is that, you know, once you market something, you can't take it back. So once the world knows who you are and where you are, they're coming, whether we want them to come to hike only or to birdwatch only, it doesn't matter. They're coming. And there's not a lot of control at this moment, especially without the built infrastructure to be able to control where you go. So people will see a picture and they think, wow, how do I get there? And they'll go wherever they think they can go because we don't have that awareness as to what we need to protect and what we need to promote. So we need that breadth of stakeholder engagement to be able to give us that direction going forward because we know as the county and as municipalities, we alone are not enough. We need all of the perspectives of the stakeholders. So that's why this is such a fulsome and thorough stakeholder engagement process.
Okay. Any other questions? Not seeing any. I'll call the question. All those in favor? That is carried. Well, that brings us to a very familiar position where it is four minutes to lunch and Scott Taylor is up on deck with a very lengthy report. Is lunch here, Madam Clerk? Yes, lunch is here. So I'm in your hands, council. What would you like to do? Do you want a break for lunch or do you want to press on? Councillor Eccles is already leaving. Councillor Mackey? Yeah?
I think it would be nice to stop for lunch, Mr. Warden. This is going to be, I think, a lengthy report, longer than we even want to put Scott through, let alone ourselves.
Fair enough. Are you all right with that, Scott? All right, we'll, we'll break for, oh, we're just going to double check that lunch is here. Don't go away yet, Scott. I don't know. Is, does somebody orchestrate this or do you have an in with the clerk that you set this up every meeting, Scott? Lunch is not here. So again, I guess you, you, you want to, I mean, we don't know how long lunch is going to be till it gets here. Why don't we, that's a good idea. Why don't we deal with the correspondence item? That shouldn't be too onerous, I don't think. But let's deal with the correspondence item that was pulled out of consent. And then we'll reassess where we want to go for lunch. So councillor McQueen, well, I need a mover and second to receive that first. Councillor Keveney and councillor Kefti. Councillor McQueen, you want to address that, that correspondence. So go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Warden, and a question and a comment. So the question I have, if you are looking at it, it's in the second paragraph. And well, there's, there's a, a part of the first paragraph- And well, there's, there's a, a, a part of the first paragraph that says it's addressed to those developing and redeveloping long-term care beds across the province. And then the latter part of the second paragraphs, it says, as we have previously communicated, operators were required to complete and submit the statement of readiness from template by December twentieth, twenty twenty two to be considered for fu- future funding. So I guess my question is, what did we submit to the province? Or did we submit by that deadline?
Good question. I'll ask him to respond, please.
Through you, Mr. Warden. Yes, we did respond by the December twentieth deadline, indicating our intent to proceed with the Rockwood Terrace development.
Go ahead, Counselor McQueen.
So my question is then, so would they not, so because we didn't submit regard regards to Gray Gables, it sort of left them nimble. And and I guess that maybe further to my, maybe I notice emotion I'll bring for it further later on, but so I guess then so the latter of, we only submitted because we were moving forward with one project, but not the other. And that's all we did submit. There was no other communication with the province on that point.
I'm going to ask him to respond again.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I did have recent discussions just to ensure that we had clarity from our project manager at the Ministry of Long Term Care. And she was able to confirm to me that eligibility for funding is based on a project's ability to receive an approval to construct by August thirty first, twenty twenty three. So if you had another project that was going to be ready to be constructed by August thirty first, twenty twenty three, you could still submit, although the December twentieth deadline is long past, you could still submit. But again, it's that August deadline that we're running up against.
Go ahead, Counselor McQueen.
Yeah, and just one other comment, just going through the long-term care presentation that was presented to the committee on Tuesday. It was communicated from Andrew that, and it's, it's in written form, that reason, reason, reason expect to start reasonably expected to start. So I thought that was interesting in some of his comments and that verbiage that that it's suggested reasonable expected to start. So I guess my thought is, 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 is that something that is a hard target? Or is that something that has some flexibility and maybe that's something we need to tease out at a different time. But thank you for that information, Mr. Mr. Warden.
Through you, Mr. Warden. I think it's interesting that the point that you raised because this is something that us as staff also struggled with when that language around reasonably expected to start was language that was used earlier on. So we thought that our timelines could proceed as, as we'd always planned them to be. However, when we received the most recent correspondence from the ministry, there are a number of other milestones that are required to be met. And again, if you looked at Collier's presentation to the redevelopment task force, those milestones are noted there. And I think so the the much more pressing milestone is the one that says, A, you have to have a tender complete by the, by July the eighteenth. And two, you have to have submitted all of your approvals. You have to have evaluated that tender. You have to have selected your contractor. Council needs to have passed a resolution in support of all of that. And that whole package of information has to have been submitted back to the province before the end of August. So those are the, those are the other pieces of information that we could go the line is tightly to that generally expected to language that's in the other part of the correspondence. It is easy to, to be a bit confused with this, but when we, we did have a meeting directly with the province to clarify that, and that is the information that was provided to us.
Okay. All those in favor to receive that correspondence? That is carried. So apparently lunch is still not here. We have substantially finished our agenda with the exception of Scott's report. So, Scott. We might as well press on and and Counselor DeBreen.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Is there an opportunity to have a very quick recess? Or are we permitted to get up and leave? I don't know the the, the practice for
Protocol is that you can leave anytime you wish, as long as we still have quorum, right? But yes, let's recess for say a minimum of quarter after ten minutes. And if lunch is here, then we'll proceed into lunch. And if not, we'll come back and start up again. How's that sound? All right, it's twelve fifteen, return. Hey, ladies and gentlemen, we'll bring the meeting back to order. Our next report is from Scott Taylor, Senior Planner. In regards to a natural heritage review options. Would someone care to move receipt of that report, Counselor Carleton and Counselor Pringle? Scott, floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Warden and members of council. And I think the ward made a comment for Savannah's report that sometimes those economic development and tourism reports make you want to run screaming. I believe our planning reports do too, but maybe in a different vein. That said, I'm not up here for my jokes, so I'll just move on to the report. So where we find ourselves today is, is as a result of some of the changes the province made to a number of pieces of legislation through Bill twenty three, which was passed on November twenty eighth, two thousand twenty two. We've talked about a number of these changes around this council table, but one of the notable changes and notable to this report, of course, were the changes made to the Conservation Authorities Act. And so what the province has done through this legislation is taken away a role of the conservation authority that some were filling with respect to commenting on natural heritage or what's also called the natural environment. And so for the ten pieces of legislation you see listed on the screen, they're no longer able to provide those services. The, the changes were passed through Bill twenty, Bill twenty three. On December twenty eighth of two thousand twenty two, we found out that these changes were to take effect on January first. So this has left both Conservation Authorities and municipalities trying to scramble a little bit to find out the solutions for how we can move forward. And just to be a hundred percent clear, Conservation Authorities are still involved in the development process. They're still reviewing natural hazard matters and and stormwater matters in that regard. They're just not reviewing matters related to natural heritage. I will also note that, that the ability to move quickly here as part of the province's mandate through both Bill one oh nine and Bill twenty three is, is something that county staff take very seriously. And we really want to work collectively to streamline the development process, which is why we're, we're looking at these changes to the natural heritage to make sure that we can still meet provincial objectives in that regard. And so when I say natural heritage, we talk both about individual features. So that might be wetlands or woodlands. And then we also talk about how the system functions as a whole. In the past, county staff and municipal staff have relied heavily on the conservation authorities on, on this regard because they were already visiting these properties and and looking at the natural environment as part of their role with respect to natural hazard. Years ago, we used to rely more on certain provincial ministries, but as some of the ministry mandates have changed, we've seen a lot less ministerial involvement in that regard. Both the Planning Act and the provincial policy statement, as well as an argument plan and our own official plans, speak to the protection of seven individual features that make up the broader system. So that's the woodlands, the wetlands, the valleylands, endangered species habitat and, and, and the like. So when we look at, at this protection, we look at the mapping first and foremost, and and some of these features are mapped. So what you see on the screen there in green is our significant woodlands and and other features aren't publicly mapped. So endangered species habitat, we're not allowed to show that mapping and continues to evolve as, as species get added or removed from the list. And and other, other pieces of mapping comes from the province, like areas of natural and scientific interest. So that's those hatched areas you see on the screen. And then furthermore, there's things like watercourses and and significant valleylands that we would identify locally at the Conservation Authority level and at the provincial level. One of the things you'll notice even just from this little map is, is that many of the natural features overlap. So you can see right in the center, and this is sort of Beaver Valley. You have an antsy, you have a water course, you have a significant valleyland and a woodland all overlapping and and there are interconnections between these features which speak to the, the broader natural heritage system. When we talk about the review of natural heritage, it does require a specialized skill set, and it's not a skill set that county and municipal staff currently have, particularly in the planning department. It would be a more ecological or biological based skill set. While planners might understand the concepts and and be able to speak somewhat intelligently on this. We don't have the skill set on staff to be able to defend that position at the Ontario Land Tribunal. So if I was put on the stand and the tribunal member said to me, Mr. Taylor, how did you reach this conclusion? In the past, I would have said, you know, through the environmental impact study and the recommendations from the Conservation Authority, we're reasonably certain that feature was protected because of X, Y and Z reasons. With respect to the protection of the features, we don't just look at the features themselves. We also look at the adjacent lands. And these are mandated through the provincial policy statement and a provincial document called the Natural Heritage Reference Manual. In many cases, these would be a hundred and twenty meters out from the feature. So if you go back to the previous map and you were to look at those woodlands and draw a hundred and twenty meter buffer around there. That's that area of influence where you may or may not still need an environmental impact study prior to development. There are certain features that the province mandates that are simply no touch areas and there shall be no development. So that would be things like a provincial significant wetland. And there's other features whereby you might be able to justify development through the, the completion of environmental impact study. Those environmental impact studies are, are paid for by the developers, or if it was a public authority developing land, they would be paying for their own environmental study. They can be lengthy and costly studies because quite often they require the ecologists to visit the site in the spring, summer and fall. And I will say that, you know, sometimes our conservation authorities in the past have, have been giving sort of an unfair rap by people that that might have concerns in that regard. But in staff's opinion, they, they've saved landowners and developers significant amounts of, of time and money in instances where they were able to visit the site and say, hey, listen, we realize the provincial policy recommends an environmental study here. But if you stick to building within this area and not at that area, you, you don't need an environmental study, or in some cases, they've been significantly able to, to scope the, the the level of study required. And and so, you know, while sometimes in the media or maybe at your own local council tables, you hear about those, those complaints or those gripes, if you will. There's so many times where, you know, we would have otherwise had to require an environmental study if it weren't for our, our four conservation authorities across Gray. And so these are just a, some examples of, of some of those areas. And so if you look in the bottom left and again, this or bottom right, sorry. This is completely hypothetical, but if we had someone coming in and wanting to develop that property in red. There are woodlands, as you can see, to the east and the west. They, this would be within that hundred and twenty meter buffer. So a strict read of the provincial policy would say, yeah, you should be environment, you should be requiring the environmental study there. This is where staff would say, listen, we've got entire streets and rows of houses between. We really don't think developing this property would have any additional impact on that woodland than, than the existing development already did. So that's something that we would do as staff. We don't really need a conservation authority or an ecologist to tell us that. The example you see in, in the top left is, is one of those more questionable areas. So if somebody wanted to develop within that little red square there, you can see you've got woodlands all around, both to the north and the south. You know, on the one hand, we could say, well, it looks like relatively clear land. There might be minimal impact. But again, if I was put on the stand at the tribunal and they said, Mr. Taylor, how did you come to that conclusion? You know, I'd be forced to go, well, it looked okay. It looked safe. It, 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 you know, bolsters my case in that regard. If I have somebody that, that knows what they're talking about to be able to say, yeah, if you develop here and if you stay X number of meters away from the drip line, then you're probably safe in that regard. And and in conversation with our conservation authorities, you know, there, there's not one set rule that we can always just say, if you, if you stay X number of meters away, it is a case by case. And they do really work with landowners to try to maximize the opportunity in that regard. The other thing I'll say with respect to the work from the conservation authorities in the past and and the work that we'd be looking for in the future is that they, they offer that objective third party opinion. And in the case where we have a developer coming forward, they've paid for their own environmental impact study. No doubt their consultants are professionals. But the minute we circulate to the public and and we're standing up at a public meeting, you know, the accusations are going to be thrown about that, that this, this environmental impact study was bought and paid for by, by an advocate for development. And and can we trust it? And we have those same accusations thrown around about a number of other technical studies, and I would equate it to some of the traffic impact studies we see that are, that are done by private engineers and and certainly the private engineer puts forward their professional opinion. But when we come back to Pat and his team and transportation services or your own municipal road staff, quite often there can be that difference of opinion. So there really is value in having sort of that, that third party opinion or municipal opinion in that regard to, to sort of gut check some of the environmental work put forward by the developer in that regard. And so in order to prepare for this report, we started just before Christmas and just after Christmas, meeting with your own municipal planning departments or for those municipalities that don't have planners. Some of the staff that are, are involved with processing development applications in that regard. And and when we met just with the planners and some of the development staff, we heard that the opinion that they would really like it if the county could assume this role because there wasn't the wherewithal at the municipal level to, to be able to pick up this role. And in many cases, on an individual municipal basis, they couldn't justify a staff position. And and if the county couldn't do that, they, they would be looking at perhaps going to consultants in that regard. We, we dug a little deeper there and we had a meeting on February third with, with again, the planning staff, but also with a number of your municipal CAOs and some other staff, including economic development. And and we put forward a, a series of questions and I'll just show you those here now. You know, would you prefer natural heritage review be at the county or municipal level? As you can see from the slide, there was eleven that said county, two that said municipal and and seven that said both levels. In, in terms of whether or not we look at county staff or both county and municipal applications, whether we look at an RFP for consultants or whether we look at just the county doing their own thing. You can see those ranked choices on the screen there. And this is just to get a flavor of the municipal staff position. I, I, I should say that none of this has, has been run by municipal councils yet, so this shouldn't be interpreted as a, as a municipal council position. But just asking some of the staff that are on the ground in development, this was their thoughts in that regard. And then finally, you know, if we were looking at hiring staff in that regard, how, how is it appropriate to, to fund this? In a number of cases, certainly development application fees and pre-submission consultation fees were, were the highest choice. Some said we could look at a, a flat rate billed to each municipality, a combination of the above and or the county tax levy. So with respect to the, the options moving forward, now that we know that the conservation authorities are out of this role, we took a look at the volume of applications processed, not only by the county and our member municipalities, but by each of the four CA's operating in Gray. And so when we correlated all that data in, in two thousand twenty one and two thousand twenty two, we were processing between five hundred and six hundred applications per year. And and certainly not all of those had natural heritage impacts or required natural heritage review. But there were a significant percentage of those that did. So, so it is a large volume of applications by the time we look at both your, your own municipal tables and and our county, county recommendations and decisions in this regard. So we put together four options for, for council to consider. Option A is to hire natural heritage review staff that would be at the county level, but would cover both municipal and county application review. In this instance, we think it would take roughly two staff in that regard. Option B would be just looking at county application review, which would be one staff. Option C would be having a consultant or a roster of consultants on retainer that could fill this role. And option D, similar to an EA, there's always the do nothing approach. And we certainly don't recommend the do nothing approach, but we wanted to put it there for the fullness of discussion. At this time, staff are recommending option B, but we're also recommending based on the, the feedback we heard from the municipalities that it bears some further discussion at the municipal level as to whether or not municipalities would want to see us potentially fill this role for the municipal applications as well. And so just very quickly on each of the options, you'll see in, in, in the report, there's a detailed table which, which outlines some of the strengths, opportunities, weaknesses and threats associated with the options. Option A, and again, this is the county staff for county and municipal application review. We do think this provides the greatest consistency across the county. It's certainly a criticism we've heard from developers in the past that, you know, they can be developing in, in two separate municipalities and and or two separate conservation authorities and seemingly have two separate review standards. Uh, it's certainly a criticism we've heard from developers in the past that, you know, they can be developing in in two separate municipalities and and or two separate conservation authorities and seemingly have two separate review standards. Uh, we think this op- this uh option also pri- provides um um the best opportunity for data collection and knowledge retention at the county level. Um, it certainly supports municipalities that might not have the wherewithal or the demand for a a staff position at the municipal level. It would allow for both the application review and more importantly, almost the pre submission application review. So those would be those opportunities where you might see uh an environmental impact study either waived or scoped in that regard. Um, excuse me, it would require an update to our county fees and services by law and might also. Uh, trigger updates to your own municipal fees and services bylaws in that regard. Um, it's important to note that these these positions wouldn't be entirely funded through application fees. Uh, so longer term, if council were to go this route, there would be a low uh levy impact. Uh, and we do also believe that having a a position like this on staff could support certain other uh county roles such as uh. Our forestry and trails staff and or um some of our climate change commitments in that regard. Option B is very similar saving except for this would be the option where we're only looking at hiring a staff person for county application review. In this case, it would be one staff position versus two. Uh, it would provide a consistent approach for the county applications, but could lead to some inconsistencies as it as it uh spans municipal boundaries in that regard. Does support some data collection and knowledge retention, but not to the same level as as having both at the county level. Um, it would leave municipalities in that role of having to find their own solution, whether that be staff at the municipal level or whether it be consultants. Uh, would still allow for some application pre screening in that regard. Uh, it would still require the update to the fees and services by law. And and uh, again, it could support some some other county initiatives in that regard. Um, option C would be the option whereby we look at going out to market for a consultant. And in this case, it would probably be consultants plural because you want to cover yourself off for those situations where you've hired firm X, but firm X also happens to to uh. Uh, represent developer Y in another municipality and therefore can't be reviewing that developer studies in that regard. And it just builds in a little redundancy. In speaking with our purchase purchasing staff, they've noted we could go out to market for for just a county consultant. Or we could ask each of our nine member municipalities, do they want to sign on to this and hire a consultant? Uh, that would cover both the county and any municipality that wants to sign on in that regard. Uh, it would allow the county to retain a team of experts, which which would definitely be beneficial in that regard. Um, some of the concerns staff have with respect to this regard come out of um. Uh, some of the current situations where we've had to go out to market for peer reviews. Uh, in those cases, we've seen instances where uh sort of the starting cost for the review is around six thousand. And typically by the time you get through the back and forth with the developers consultants, you're you're up around the ten to twelve thousand dollar range. So it can be costly. Uh, we do worry about uh about cost management in this regard. Uh, we also worry about um uh the time it can take to get uh feedback from the consultants while we work with some wonderful consultants and and very. Uh, skilled professionals in that regard, uh, the county would be just one of their clients and we would be competing against a number of their other clients for for their time in that regard. And and particularly in in the era of Bill one oh nine, where municipalities are under pressure to make decisions. Uh, or give back application fees, um, it could re- result in in delays in that regard. I would note that Bruce County has recently been having these discussions as well. Uh, their interim option is to use a consultant. Uh, and and uh until they can can figure out uh what they want to do on a longer term basis. We've talked to some other municipalities here on county already has a planning ecologist on staff. Uh, and they've noted it has has been going very well in that regard. They've had that position for a number of years. Um, the other worry with the consulting approach would be that it could lead to inconsistent review standards, particularly if we got into a situation where. We had a roster of consultants or we had a situation where the county had a consultant and individual municipalities had a separate consultant in that regard. Option D, again, we're not recommending this. Um, this would be the do nothing. Uh, we we worry that this would leave lead to a possible degradation of our environmental features. We worry that uh that we would be prone to more uh Ontario Land Tribunal challenges. Uh, based on uninformed recommendations from county or municipal staff to uh to our respective councils in that regard. Uh, so we did want to provide that, but but we don't see a lot of upsides to this particular option. Um, with respect to the financial and and resource implications, um, money was not included in the two thousand twenty three budget for for this. Um, we flagged it as a budget risk at the time of budget, but but simply put, uh, we didn't have enough information at that time and we hadn't had those initial consul- initial conversations with our municipalities. Um, should council want to uh pursue uh this further after today? Um, we've identified that at least for two thousand twenty three, the funding could come from uh any year end surpluses in two thousand twenty three. And or our waste management reserves, our planning study uh reserves or or one time funding. Uh, we would note that there would be a lag time until such time as we can A, hire somebody. Uh, but B, also update our applications in that or app or sorry, our application fees in that regard. And we'd also be having uh either a consultant or staff review applications for which we've already charged the lower fee and and those are already in process. Um, it's estimated that if we were to take on a staff in this regard, it would be about a hundred and one thousand dollars for one staff. Uh, for salary and pension and benefits and all that. Uh, that doesn't include any equipment or mileage. And if we were to go to the staff of supporting municipal, the root of supporting municipalities as well, it would essentially double that. So we'd be at about two hundred and two thousand dollars in that regard. Uh, we have reached out to our four conservation authorities to to try to understand. Okay, if if this is coming off their plate, so to speak, will we see reductions in the conservation authority fees? Uh, what we've heard uh from most of our conservation authorities is likely not. Uh, they're still having to do a similar level of work in terms of. Uh, visiting those properties and and writing their letters. Their letters will be a little bit shorter. Um, one of them did say they might look at some some minor reductions in the future. Um, but the other sort of uh key piece of information here is that their fees are frozen for all of two thousand twenty three by the province. So. Whether they wanted to look at a fee increase or a fee decrease, uh, they can't do that at this time. Um, but just for council's benefit, we're not expecting significant decreases in the conservation authority fees going forward in that regard. Um, so with that, the staff recommendation is that the report be received, it certainly be shared with municipalities and conservation authorities who have already, you know, fed into this process in a significant way. Uh, we are recommending option B at this time so that we pursue hiring a single county staff position to support our county operations in that regard. And that we um, we further consult with our member municipalities to look at whether or not uh they see uh merit in option A. And if they did, we would come back to uh council for with some options in that regard. And and so that would be adding one other staff position on top of the option B. Um, the other thing to note in the resolution is that uh we are recommending that we might need to use consulting services, at least on an interim basis for natural heritage review. Until such time as as uh we have a staff member recruited, if that is the direction that council proceeds to staff today. So again, I apologize for the rather lengthy presentation of report, but certainly happy to take any questions if there are any.
Thank you, Scott. Very thorough. And you don't need to apologize. We could see it was going to be a long report. It's a very important one as well. Counselor Bourdon, you have the floor.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Warden, through you and. Scott, thank you for the, thank you for the report. Um, I always like internalizing things about, you know, as opposed to going to the consultants. Um, in this instance, you know, I I I agree because what we could do is we could. County staff could reach out to the local municipalities where these are impacted. Uh, you know, because there's additional protections and that need to come into place at the local level as well as the regional county level. Um, so I think even if there's a consultant in the interim, I think reaching using your planning department augmented by the. Um, single by the local level municipalities, I think would be a great uh tool. Have you considered sort of like a. Not a co, but working with counties, county planning staff and then the the municipalities uh's own planning staff to augment that kind of work. Is that? I I know it wasn't really in the recommendation, sort of a hybrid, but is that something that you've considered? When you were putting this report together?
Through you, Mr. Mr. Warden. Uh, thank you for your your comments and your question, Councilor Bournion. We we haven't had detailed discussions with municipalities in this regard. Um, our thought is that that if the county were to hire staff uh to to fulfill that municipal role as well. Uh, they would need to work closely with your own municipal teams. And and so certainly on those applications where it's a county decision, uh, they would work closely with county staff. Um, but we see them working very closely with your own planning, uh, development engineering and or building departments in that regard. Um, I'm not sure if I've I've totally covered the scope of your question, so please correct me if I've if I've missed the point there.
No, no, you you did pick up on it, Scott. Thank you. I just, you know, when we look at um. How an area is promoted, understanding the uses, what's permitted, what's not permitted. Um. From the, uh, I think it's vastly important that we work with the regional level as well as the local level together. So whether, and I I don't know if a a consultant that'd be within the scope of their work, but I think from a planning perspective, uh, like a staff member. At the regional level and a staff member at the local level, and both in planning, I think would be able to do that work. I'm not convinced a consultant would be able to. So in the, you know, there might be some augmenting of work as well, even if there is a consultant in. Interim, I don't think that's, I don't think it's either um. A or B, I think. Even if there's a consultant, your department as well as the planning departments of the local levels need to be in, need to be involved um every step of the way. That's sort of my point in question, I guess.
Yeah, I I would certainly concur with those uh comments, Councilor Bournion, and and. You know, we can have municipal applications that that uh are very local in scope and very local in nature and and, you know, I don't think the county planners are necessarily looking to. Insert themselves into those processes any more than we are, we are. Uh, but if the direction is received from county council and our own municipal councils. That it makes sense to to take a a um, you know, county level uh look at natural heritage. Then I think we'd love to see uh, say, a planning ecologist embedded uh. Say at the county level, but but again, working on behalf of the municipalities in that regard. Um, we do have other services that the county offers uh that that already take a similar model. So in this regard, uh, our county I T department. Provides geographic information system services to six of our nine member municipalities. Uh, and and so we could look at a similar role here, uh, maybe a slightly different model. Um, but I think there's going to be those questions at the local level whereby you have somebody coming in and 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 knocking on your door saying, I'd like to sever a lot. Um, what am I going to need to do? And I think that's where having that planning ecologists that your local staff could call at the county. Uh, and say, hey, listen, this is required an environmental study. If so, what's the scope? Um, that's where we see great benefit to having that consistent approach across the nine municipalities, if that's something the municipalities indeed want from the county.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, counselor, and thank you, Scott, for that response. Counselor Nielsen.
Thank you very much, Warden Mill. Um. Just for myself or for comments, it's kind of two comments. One is that. Even with natural heritage features, there are areas that would have. Mutual benefit to multiple municipalities, right? So boundaries don't exist between the physical barriers of a natural heritage. So our town lines are 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 bordering uh between each of us as partners of Gray County. So when I look at this proposal that having a a county staff person that reviews. The county as a region makes the most sense. I also look at it from a staffing perspective, if. Um. I would, I would say that my preferred option be option A, because if each of us of the municipalities is trying to hire a consultant or trying to hire our own staff. We're going to be competing with each other for the same talent pool. But we're also competing with each other for um. Trying to get the resources, trying to utilize staff time and such. So I think that option A would be my preferred. While understanding that this body shouldn't be passing option A and then saying to all the number of municipalities. Hey, we're going to force you to join this. So I I understand the recommendation before us is saying we're going to work with our municipalities. Get confirmation, see who's on board. I do think that that makes the most sense that the two staff option at the county level. There are um presented different funding options for how that would work is the most logical moving forward as. It'll prevent all of us from trying to compete with each other. So. That's just more of a comment than a question.
Thank you, counselor. Did I see a hand over here? Yes, Counselor Mackey.
Thanks, Mr. Warden. Um, I agree with Counselor Nielsen. I don't think it makes any sense for. Each one of the lower mere tier municipalities to go about this by themselves. That being said, there may be some of the larger municipalities that that want to take this on. But speaking from a smaller municipality, I would certainly like to be part and parcel of uh the county initiative. My question, Scott, is will the qualifications of this ecologist? Be such that I sat, I found there's an increasing even, you know, utilizing the conservation authorities over the last number of years. The number of environmental impact studies that I've seen has increased. Whether that's from a liability standpoint, but my question is, will the ecologist? Be able to make that final decision after a site visit as opposed to going to a an E I S study?
Uh, through you, Mr. Warden. Uh, thank you for your question, Counselor Mackey. I I I don't want to oversell this. So i- in 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 a number of cases, there will still be the need for an environmental impact study. Um, certainly, especially when we're looking at larger developments, things like a planet sub vision or or things like a gravel pit. Yeah, we're still going to need an environmental impact study in most cases. Uh, our our hope is that having uh this type of resource either on staff or through a consultant. Uh, we could waive those requirements for some of the smaller developments. Uh, so those might be your individual zoning amendments or consents. Um, but there are times when it it it's it's simply going to still be required. Uh, and and the conservation authority has filled that role and there were times when they would, you know. If you like, stick their neck out to say, hey, listen, I I get that policy requires this, but we really think it's not needed in this case because of the following reasons. And and so we would hope that that staff person or consultant could provide that that similar resource in that regard. Uh, and just maybe if I could back to Counselor uh Nielsen's comments. I think that's a very valid point in terms of uh municipalities competing for resources, whether it be at a staff level or whether it be a consulting. Uh, this type of role I I neglected to mention would need to, similar to the conservation authority staff, spend a lot of time in the field. Um, this isn't a role that we think we could hire someone in Toronto for and they could just work remotely kind of thing. Uh, we would probably be looking at either local talent or recruiting somebody locally. And particularly when it comes to the consulting resources in this area and in sort of the broader region. Uh, there's only a certain number of firms out there and a number of them are actively engaged with our developers. So. Uh, we do worry that if we were to go the consultant or roster of consultants approach, it could be tough to find people. Um, we also worry to a certain degree that if we go up the staff approach, it could still be tough to find people because. We could have a number of municipalities across the province now needing to fill this role um with the gap left by municipalities or by conservation authorities, sorry.
Uh, thanks, Scott, for that response. One follow up question. If we went with A or how much time can you wait? To hear from the lower tier municipalities before you need to go through with recruitment? I guess, you know, it'd be who, some of us to try and make these decisions at our lower tier municipalities rather quickly. I just think if you're interviewing at the county, it would be easier to interview for two positions as opposed to one, if that was the decision of the lower tiers.
Yeah, thank you for your your comments, Counselor Mackey. In this case, the the changes did take effect on January first. Um, so we're in near daily discussions with municipal planning departments. Whereby you've got uh someone knocking at your door to say, hey, I want to do this and and either municipal county municipal or county planner says. What do we think we need from an environmental perspective? Do we need an environmental back study here? Do we not? And and I can tell you that in cases where we don't have a qualified person, the default, if you like, cover your butt approach is is probably to lean towards requiring that. Um, because, you know, nobody wants to be that person that's embarrassed at the tribunal uh when they stuck their neck out. Um, so, you know, could we wait a little bit longer? Yes. Um, but the 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 danger of waiting is that we're going to be potentially utilizing more consulting resources. Or we could be holding up development processes and development review uh while we wait for answers in that regard. Um, so your comments certainly are well taken. If we were to look at hiring staff at the county level. Um, you know, if if you're advertising for a position, it's 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 just as cheap to advertise advertise for two as it is one. But at the same point, we didn't want to find ourselves in a situation where we said, oh, let's hire two staff. And then find out that five of our nine municipalities were going their own way and we didn't actually need two staff. Um, so ideally, uh, if council provides direction today, we would like to reach back out to our member municipalities and say. Um, what discussions do we need to have with you? What discussions need to happen at a local level, whether it's be staff to staff or whether it be uh discussions at your municipal council tables?
Counselor DeBree.
Thank you and through you, Warden Mill, uh, to Scott. We, and thank you for the report. As lengthy as it was, it was very informative and you covered all all of the bases. I did have a question, prohibiting the C A from commenting on natural heritage. Uh, is is could potentially further delay development. It's definitely going to increase the cost and it's certain, most certainly going to duplicate effort. With extra boots on the ground because you've got the C A out there doing natural hazard and then you've got. An environmental impact individual, you know, covering the same area, which is very unfortunate. Um, I'm a firm believer that growth should pay for growth wherever possible. We know it's not a perfect uh formula. But um. Would or have you considered the hiring of this individual on a contract basis? While we're waiting on the province to determine what the P P S is going to look like or. And and I I. Will say it upfront, it's highly unlikely that they'll backpedal and say, okay, you now you can contract the the conservation authority. I mean, they they're not likely to do that, but you know, we could always hope. We have run into this at S V C A where two competing consultants. Uh, did not agree. Could not even find a common ground. So your point about consultants. And and the the. Perhaps the peer review and disagreeing. The other thing is, is with the conservation authorities not doing it and everyone having to go out and hire these consultants. They're going to be harder and harder to get. Um. Would hiring them on a six to 12 month contract initially? Uh, get us through that. That hump because if something did change, we've got an employee that. You know, that we might not need. And maybe that's not the perfect solution, but that is basically my question. Through you, Mr. Warden. I think for the reasons that, um. Director Taylor has outlined with regard to the fact that everybody's in the same boat here, that there's a lot of competition. I would. Really worry that we would not ever get anybody to commit to a contract. I just, I just don't see that as being a, a competitive. Thing in, in the marketplace that we're in right now. I just had to ask the question and, and I, and, and I realize that because you know, they may accept the contract and then in thirty days get a permanent offer and, you know. Sayonara. I am supportive of having. You know, the two employee concept. Because again, as councillor Nielsen said, we're going to be competing for the same talent pool. And I'm not sure, ha- have you developed a job description? Is this going to come back? I don't know how it works at county level, but. You know, there's still some time for you to develop the job description and put it out there that we may be able to resolve at our mutual council tables. That we want to get on board.
Uh, thank you for your question, councillor Debrin, through you, Mr. Warden. Um, we haven't developed a, a job description, but we have done some research and collected job descriptions from other municipalities. Like I said, here on county has, uh, a staff position like this already on staff. Uh, we've also looked at, uh, some of the conservation authorities on across Ontario in terms of what their job description said. Um, so we have, um, not the wording nailed down, but we have a relative idea of, of where we'd start there. And, and through those reviews and, and through the assistance of our, our wonderful HR team. Um, that's how we were able to sort of cost out, uh, and our finance team, sorry. Uh, a cost out where this position would, would fall in our non-union grid in that regard. Um, typically speaking, and obviously staff take direction from council. Um, we would, we would seek direction on, on, uh, on the funding in this regard. Um, but most often those job descriptions wouldn't come back directly to council. Um, we would proceed with the, the direction that we get today, uh, develop the job description with our HR team. Uh, and then look at posting from there again, if that was the direction received through council.
Uh, Randy has something more to add on that particular piece. Randy?
Yeah, thank you. And, and just further to what Scott indicated that, you know, obviously there will be a bit of time required to. If depending on the direction from councils today in terms of drafting up a job description, doing the job postings. Um, if, if. The support is for option B at this stage, but to still have some of those further discussions with the municipalities. The two could. Go in parallel in terms of, you know, doing the job description. Uh, and having those further discussions with the municipalities. If the timing works and aligns and we bring back a report, uh, prior to us either releasing that job posting. Or even as part of the interview process, if we find that there's two qualified candidates. And, and council and the local municipal support hiring. Um, having the county provide that service, then that, you know, we could offer more. One position or two positions depending on where, what council decides and what the local municipalities decide. So I think. We could look at in parallel. It's going to take a bit of time, no doubt, as we've had the discussions internally. To prep, prep the job description, do the job posting, to do the interview process and actually hire the staff person. Earliest we're thinking is, is, is likely May. Um, and so. Again, we can have those parallel discussions with the municipalities. To see if they want to, uh, the county to provide this service and, and like I said, it could work out from a timing perspective. Um, if not, uh, then we'll be maybe accessing that same pool of interviewees and, and, and starting the process, uh, as well, but. Uh, if the timing works, the timing aligns, that, that's a possibility. Uh, so just wanted to throw that out there in terms of how we could proceed forward if. We're, the staff are recommending at minimum option B, um, uh, because as Scott indicated, um, we are, we. Don't have someone reviewing natural heritage view as we speak. Um, based on bill twenty-three changes. So, so we need to fill that gap sooner rather than later. And so having this to start the process at least. Um, and have that at least one position in place, uh, is going to be beneficial.
So I think from that, take from that. That if you're a lower tier and you're thinking you want the county to do this work for you. Get it up. And get with the program. Councillor Debrin, you had a follow up.
And just, and just one final thought. I'm, as I said, growth should pay for growth if at all possible. We should get as close. To cost recovery as possible, uh, developers, um, you know, building back. My biggest fear is that the talent pool, uh, may be from our conservation authorities, which could and. Then delay us anyway, because now we don't have the staff to do the natural hazard review. But we'll see what happens.
Yep, good, good comment. Round and round we go. Councillor Eccles.
Thank you, and that leads right into my question. How many staff will be available from the conservation authorities? I'm only. Uh, in West Grey deal with one. But. It seems like there's a huge amount of time spent on this natural heritage and now that the conservation authorities. So game values, I don't know when I could speak to, or so game conservation. We've eliminated the valley portion of it. What resources, human resources does that free up? How many conservation people are looking for jobs? I guess that's. Or is there nobody, um, Mr. Green, the chair, you've said that. You know, it's going to be taking away. So is there a lot of time that's spent there? I don't want to try and figure out conservation authority staffing proportion. But from my understanding. It's something that's done in parallel. But from a conversation, uh, at a board meeting the other day, it's really not that big. In Salgi Valley. We kind of do it off the side of the desk was what I was told. If I remember right, thank you, Mr. Green. Why did the ministry? And I, I know. That's just a statement on that portion. I'll go on to the next part of my question. Early in your conversation or the report presentation. Scott, you said that the ministry, natural resources, environment, a number of other ministries that did reporting. Got out of this. A long time ago. Whether it was under fisheries, whether it was under woodlands, whether. We didn't go to them. What was the reason? Was it that? County planning, conservation authorities. Or municipal. Had. Elevated to the point where they could do it and it was redundant for the ministries to be in it. We have matured. To that point. In our planning staff. Because I can tell you, I served with the individual that was a clerk a number of years. And a few years ago, and he said when he started his clerk in a lower tier municipality, it was a township at the time. He was dog, uh, issued the dog tags. Issued the building permits, da, 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 da. One person did all of that. It's matured dramatically at West Grey. We did take in one of those townships, but it was five municipalities that come together with West Grey. Each one of those municipalities had a clerk and maybe a road superintendent and a few other ones. Today. We probably have. At West Grey, how many planning staff? Six. I'd hate to hear what Blue Mountains has. I'm just. It's always been and looking more towards Randy when Randy was director of planning, we've had those conversations years ago. Why? What's the fear? Of us taking something over in-house. On natural heritage because I certainly have never been given. What is the requirements to do natural heritage? At a hundred and one thousand jobs, and I just said to my fellow councillor beside me, at a hundred and one thousand. I'm going to be thinking about applying for it myself. Because I believe I have as much qualifications. I've walked in the bush in awful long time and I can, I can identify a fern, but. Do we need to go there? My suggestion is we do nothing at this point in time and see if we can handle it in-house. Thank you.
Uh, thank you for your, your comments and questions, uh, councillor Eccles and, and through you, Mr. Warden. Uh, just to address the first part, uh, with respect to the conservation authorities and, and, and whether they'll have any surplus staff as a result of this. We have had discussions with our conservation authority staff in that regard. Uh, what they've indicated to us is, is that they don't see a significant time reduction on their end. Uh, because the lion's share of their work was going out to the site, visiting the site. And also reviewing the materials for the application, all of which they're still going to have to do. Uh, what it's ultimately going to mean on their end, as we understand it, uh, is their letters are probably going to be a few paragraphs shorter. Um, but, uh, we, we raise concerns about this to the province as part of the draft, uh, bill twenty-three. Uh, because we did see that, that this is going to result in duplication. Uh, and, and we don't believe it's going to necessarily speed up development process. Uh, so by taking conservation authorities out of the equation, uh, doesn't mean that that role is, is completely gone. It just means. Potentially someone else needs to fill that role. Um, with respect to your comments about the provincial ministry roles. Um, as we know, a number of provincial ministries, uh, uh, under different governments have evolved over time. Uh, we used to deal significantly with, uh, natural resources on, uh, these natural heritage matters. Uh, in the past, we would be able to, uh, send a environmental impact study to staff at the ministry natural resources. And they would give us comments back to say, you know, either pass or fail, or here's what still needs to be done. Uh, over the years as, as they've had staff reductions and, and mandate changes. Um, quite often, uh, the comments we get back would be something along the lines of. The county municipalities need to satisfy themselves, uh, that it meets provincial policy in that regard. And so satisfying ourselves could come through, you know, comments from the conservation authority in the past. It could come from hiring a peer reviewer, um, or it could come from, from having staff on board. Uh, I don't believe that, that any of our nine member municipalities or the county have. Uh, staff with a specialized knowledge that, that would be needed to fill this role. Uh, as I noted, there is definitely the, the do nothing approach, um, but we do believe it comes with significant risks. Uh, in terms of, of future challenges to our decisions and, and potential future damage to some of our environmental areas. I, I take the point certainly, um, that natural heritage, uh, it is, is not always clear cut. Uh, you know, similar to planning, i- it's not black and white and, and you can have two different ecologists give you two different opinions. Uh, just like, you know, you have two different planners give you multiple different opinions as well. I know, shock. Um, but, but we, we do rely on that technical expertise and, and you know, while I could. Walk in a natural area and identify certain species, I, I wouldn't have the knowledge to understand some of the interconnections. Or some of the impacts of, you know, if, if you, if you lose this part of the feature, what's that going to do to the whole? Uh, a- and that's where we really do rely on, on though that technical knowledge. Uh, through, through, in the past, the conservation authorities or the provincial ministries. Uh, and maybe now more so either through consultants or, or staff or, or, or some other approach.
Thank you, Scott. Councillor Eccles.
Thank you. Just one quick part on that. Uh, on Tuesday. West Grey zoning, uh, zoning amendment committee. We had, uh, five zoning amendments that we were looking at. Uh, four of them had, uh, reports from solving conservation that they had comments on, just interesting. Uh. No concerns on the natural heritage, uh, was the paragraph. I guess what caught me was if any further development on this site is going to be, is going to be done. An environmental impact study. Would be recommended. So. I guess the point is. That's exactly what the conservation is doing. They're looking at it. They went out, they looked at it. Yep, things soon to be good. You're going to build a house in this, uh, on the field. You're not going to do it in the, in the bush. Uh, where the, uh, severance was put forward. Everything's fine, but if it's going to be in the bush, hire somebody to do an impact study. I guess I'm looking at it. I. That's what it takes. Again. I think I'd, you know, be able to find a few people for a hundred and one thousand dollars a year that would be able to do that. Put that forward. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments and maybe your example is, is akin to what we see in the top left here. Uh, in that the conservation authority would, would potentially identify that, that, uh, red square and say, listen, if you want to build in there. Uh, you don't need to do any environmental studies, but if you want to go anywhere other than that red square, that's where you might be into the environmental impact study. And so. Quite often what that looks like at the municipal level is, is, is you might have a zoning amendment. Which identifies the building envelope as the red square and you might have a holding symbol on the rest. I should also clarify that that a hundred and one thousand dollar figure, um, is inclusive of, of not just salary, but also pension and benefits. So, so it's not. A hundred and one thousand dollars take home, uh, that's, that's the total cost in that regard. Um, in looking at where it would fall within our existing non-union grid. Um, it would be equivalent to, uh, an intermediate planner. So not the fresh out of school planner, not the senior planner, the kind of in-between. Um, so, so you know, certainly you could get into a situation where you're hiring a senior ecologist that, that maybe has ten or fifteen years experience. That's not what we're looking for here. That's not what we're seeking direction to get. Uh, we're looking for someone with maybe a couple of years' experience that can, uh, have those discussions with developers and, and they're consulting ecologists in that regard.
Thank you, Scott. Councillor McQueen, your hand was up earlier. Do you still have a question?
Uh, just briefly in the sense of, uh. I think it goes back to what councillor Mackey was saying and a little bit of common sense. So I know a lot of our planning is done by. Um, tabletop. But sometimes if things have been identified, site visits are so, so important because. The lay of the land sort of speaks for itself and, uh, you know, we know water runs downhill and, and all that kind of stuff. So. Long as there's a bit of common sense in the sense of we do go the part of hiring. Somebody at the county, there's, I think there's having a per, uh, one person doing it all. There's some consistency. And who's doing that? And, you know, and then there's, you know, because I think if you have different people doing it, then it's. There's not consistency as somebody just mentioned earlier on that two consultants are at odds with, uh, so. I think there's a certainly. A bit, there has to be a bit of common sense to the part of. An EIS, scoped EIS or an EIA, EIS is not required and, you know, it's not necessarily from. Development of subdivisions or, but there's people that, you know, build houses, there's farmers that build buildings. There's a lot of different dynamics that. That, uh, different projects or, or different development applications fall into and. You know, like I think everything else, it's, again, goes back to the common sense of, of, you know, what's, you know, and I mean, our mapping is fairly well. Defined, so I think there's a lot of, in the pre-consult, there's probably a lot of. That can be done in that initially and that sort of thing. But again, I just want to make sure there's a bit of common sense and it's not. As councillor Mackey said, uh, everything's got to be EIS.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Debrin.
If I may just follow up, Warden Millen, and Scott, you covered off a, a couple of things. The, the. The pro- the ministry, uh, basically downloaded natural heritage commenting some years ago. And to the conservation authority. And it's the conservation authority staff that are, have the ability to evaluate whether an in- impact study is required. They don't actually do the impact study. Uh, they recommend that it could be waived or it, as you said, Scott. If it's going to be built, built within the farm cluster, for instance. The disturbance has already occurred. If you're going to expand that parcel, it may encroach on natural heritage and we recommend an impact study. In this instance, with your recommendation to hire an employee of the county. It's a bit twofold, your wardens. Will they actually be doing the impact study or will they be evaluating whether one is required? And I guess it depends on the degree, whether there are a, have two years' experience or ten years' experience. Uh, and whether or not they would be challenged, uh, by the developer to say they disagree. And I guess my net, well. I'll let you answer that one and see.
Sure, uh, through you, Mr. Warden. Uh, just a bit of clarification. Uh, as the ministry started to get out of some of these roles, uh, they didn't specifically download it to the conservation authorities. Uh, technically it came back to counties and municipalities and it's because we didn't have anyone on staff. Uh, that the conservation authorities started filling those roles. And so when, when the Ford government first came in, in their, their first term of government, uh, they made some changes to the Conservation Authorities Act at that time. Uh, to outline, uh, what they called. they made some changes to the Conservation Authorities Act at that time to outline what they called mandatory services and non-mandatory services. So natural hazard, that was a mandatory service. Natural heritage, that was a, a non-mandatory service whereby municipalities and counties could enter into memorandums, memorandums of understanding with the conservation authorities to fill that role. So just a bit of clarification there, because there has been some questions around this horseshoe many, many years ago as to where the conservation authorities got their mandate to be involved in natural heritage. And in most cases, that was through MOUs with the municipalities. With respect to your question, in, in, in this case, if the county were to hire a planning ecologist, they would be first and foremost helping answer the question, is a study required? If a study is required, they might be helping shape the terms of reference and/or reviewing that study, but they wouldn't be completing that study. So just as, you know, when we tell a developer they need to do a traffic study or a stormwater management report, they hire their own consultants to do that, it would be a very similar role. We certainly wouldn't have the people power to get into offering those services for developers, certainly with the level of development we've got going on across the county. And it could also put those ecologists in a very difficult role of, of being torn between sort of development and a public authority in that regard.
Thank you, and that was really great to hear how that transpired, but, and I did understand the MOU. And as far as the staffing and what I meant by the conservation authority could end up losing staff, not as a result of us terminating them because of lack of work, because certainly with all of the development in our watersheds of late and the push to have more, the natural hazard takes up the bulk of their evaluation and assessment. What I meant was that the, the move to a municipal government with the package that is being offered may be attractive to the individuals in the conservation authorities. And they, they, they may leave, leaving the conservation authorities having to look elsewhere for their staffing, which is normal through, you know, people move. Thank you.
Council, great.
Thanks, Warden Mill, and, and just to kind of provide some, Grace Alwell, response to Member Eccles's comments or questions. Grace Alwell undertook a rates review. We commissioned Watson and Associates in two thousand twenty-one, and, and they completed it in early two thousand twenty-two, and we adopted a new rate fee structure for, I mean, it was a broad document, but it was a significant increase across the board. And, yeah, I mean, it came through county council. We certainly migrated toward, towards the provincial directive of a more user-pay approach. We had a planning department consisting of largely five, generating probably four to five hundred permits a year. And then during the last three years, that's migrated somewhere north of nor nine hundred. We've added a regulatory officer. We're hiring a water engineer this spring, and we were going to hire an ecologist. We scaled back that ecologist position last fall when Bill twenty-three was announced, and we removed that from the rate fee structure because it was developed inclusive of that ecology position. So those fees did get removed from, from Grace Alwell Conservation Authority. I guess I have one particular question. We haven't spoke much about meeting timelines to this point yet, and there is certainly, it's mandated upon municipalities to adhere to strict timelines on the issuance of permits. And if not, then we can be refunding fees. So certainly we need to just discuss that because that's certainly relevant to, if we're taking the position on. But at the same time, I'm weary of adding positions quickly when one of the items I'm going, I was going to bring at some point during the year, because nothing drives me more nuts than when I'm reading a ZBA document in On Sound, and the PPS is about that thick, and the Gray, the Gray County official plan is about as thick as my finger. And we have professional planners at the city of On Sound that put together a lengthy report, and then I'm going through the report, and then I read eleven pages of comments from the county of Gray. And I think if our planners are professionally qualified to the extent that they can interpret six or eight inches of the provincial policy statement, I believe they're equally competent to integrate into their report the County of Gray official plan. So at the same time, it's been a concern that I've been watching, and at some point, it, it needs to be discussed at how much overlap at the same time we're already doing, because that's an example. I don't know what the answer is. Well, I have an idea. But one of the responses, I know Woodstock is a community who does not have their own planning department. They uploaded that function to the county of Oxford years ago. So that's just something that I'm a little bit hesitant to. How do we respond if development slows down so that we haven't just grossed up our planning department resources again in such a way that we're not prepared to adequately scale it back if, if the amount of work's not there?
So just before Scott, and I have, I see Council McQueen's hands up as, as well. I want to reel us back in a little bit to what the report is asking for in front of us. And I, I appreciate your concerns, Councilor Greg, but I feel like we're we're drifting here. And I'm not sure everybody else has the whole afternoon to sit here and, and drift, but good discussion. But I'm not sure all of it is entirely relevant to the report, but CEO Windgrove wanted to add something here.
We undertake, I think, a pretty thorough analysis before we would ever make the decision to recommend bringing a staff person onto staff in a permanent capacity. Every person that, that comes here is normally subject to terms of employment that include preliminary period of evaluation. But this corporation's not different than any other. If, if the nature of our business changes, it's certainly within our ability to make changes in our staffing complement to align with that. So I, I wouldn't want that to be, we, we would never go knowingly create that situation, but it is certainly isn't something that we couldn't deal with if it happened.
Council McQueen, you had your hand up?
I, I can sort of, yeah, I understand. We, we don't want to be here the whole afternoon, so I, I, I can hold off. It's just more general with regards to who we hire and scoping and stuff like that, but no, I, I'm good.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? Council Carlton.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. My question actually is about next steps. What is expected from each municipality? Are we to take this back to our own councils, or is there going to be a report put out to each municipality asking for comment back? I'd just like to know what we're expected to do going forward, and thank you.
Through you, Mr. Warden. Yeah, great question, Council Carlton. Depending on the direction that county council provides today, one of the elements of the motion is to, to share this report with your municipal staff. They were involved in the creation of this report, but we'd like to share the completed version with your CAOs and, and planning departments and, and so on and so forth. If council provides the direction that we further investigate option A, then I think when we share that report, we, we would ask the question back to staff, sort of, are you in or are you out? And, and then it would be up to staff to, to have that discussion with council if, if that was your municipal structure in that regard.
Thank you, Scott. Council Mackey.
Thanks, Mr. Warden. So to avoid the drift, I would recommend that we further explore option A.
Okay, thank you. Is there a secondary for that? Council Hutchison. I'm wondering, is that an amendment? Yes, because we already have a motion on the floor. So the amendment is to go, you're recommending B, I presume? Or basically?
We're recommending B, but with, with aside of exploring option A further. So clause six in, in, in the recommendation is to explore A, but, but clause three is to proceed with B immediately. So it was, it was proceed with B and, and further explore A. Obviously, if council's direction is otherwise, then we can, we can look at amendments to the motion accordingly.
Council Mackey, it almost sounds like what you're amending is already in the motion. Maybe you could clarify a little bit.
Yes, possibly it is, Mr. Warden. I guess my concern is that I would like to see those member municipalities take this upon themselves to get an answer back to the county so that we can align, if that's the majority of the lower tiers, that we can align this process. I would hate to see the county go ahead and hire a staff to find out two months from now that the majority of the lower tiers want additional staff. I think we should be able to move this along ourselves if we are committed to wanting option A. I will certainly be moving it ahead in chats for it to get a decision within the next, within the next month. I heard Randy speak about May. There shouldn't be any issue with lower tiers having an answer by, by May so that we could coordinate this process. So that's all I'm hoping for, Mr. Warden, is that we can do it together and have an answer, whether it's A or B before the hiring takes place. Thanks.
Yeah, when I heard Randy say that May was going to be sort of the target to, at the earliest, to hire somebody, I'm hopeful that there'd be lots of, or sufficient time for the lower tiers to consider this at their own council tables and get a response back to the county to, you know, inform their decision. Did somebody, Council DeBreen?
So to clarify, though, the intent of the resolution is that staff will reach out to the lower-tier municipalities with a report, which is what initiates our discussion at the lower tier. Failing that, we have to bring a notice of motion. Our council meeting has, that, that ship has sailed for the next two weeks. But with, with this, with Scott reaching out to the lower-tier municipalities, that will be the, the trigger to bring it to our respective councils. And, you know, it is time-sensitive, so we can encourage that to happen sooner than later. And if, if that is the understanding of the original resolution, then I don't know that we need an amendment.
Well, and I would agree. I, I think that is entirely the intention, although I look to, Council Mackey's okay with that. So we're back to the original motion as it's understood. Is there any further questions or discussion? Council Bartley, sorry, I didn't see your hand. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, sir. My issue with this is the conservation authorities are telling us that this heritage thing is such a small part of the process that they're not going to give us credit for it. We're not going to pay less. So if it's that small, I'm thinking I'm making this too simple. One person should be able to do it all. If it's that small that they're not going to give us a break on the price, and then now we're going to ask developers to pay two prices, one from the conservation authority, one from the county, which might extend, extend things. My issue is I think we should go with B and see if one person can handle the whole county. Because if it's that small of a thing, like Council Eccles is saying, it very seldom comes up. I think it, could it be possible one person could handle it?
Through you, Mr. Warden. Thank you for your question, Council Bartley. I think it's, it's considered a small component of what the conservation authorities do in the scope of what they're doing. And, and, and so if, if they've allotted in an hour and a half to visit a site and walk the property, that's an hour and a half that they're already out there. But in, in the scope of the entire county, when we're looking at between five and six hundred applications a year, I, I just don't think one staff position would be capable of, of doing that because they would have to do their own independent site visits for a number of the properties, certainly some properties you don't need to visit. There's just nothing there. But I think by the time you factor in all the field work and, and, and the desk work, I just worry that we'd be overselling ourselves to suggest that, that one person could fill that role on behalf of our, our nine-member municipalities.
Thank you, Scott. Just, we're double, we're doing the job twice, and I don't understand why we're doing that. It's, it, we're supposed to be speeding up the development process. This is going the opposite.
Fair comment. Any other discussion? Randy, did you? No? You're just waving at a fly? Cheering on Savannah's report? Go ahead.
I was just going to build on the comments from Council Bartley that, that we see this is, is unfortunately based on the Bill twenty-three legislation creating some duplicate work where we have now two entities that are essentially reviewing a similar feature that at the end of the day, one is providing comments more in the hazard, one is coming more in the heritage, but it might be the exact same wetland that they're looking at.
Thank you. And it makes no sense. I agree with you, Council Bartley. It makes no sense at all. But Bill twenty-three, that ship's sailed, and we got to try, we're, we're left picking up the pieces. So here we are. I'm going to call the question if there's no further questions. All those in favor? That is carried. Thank you very much. Scott, I'm glad we did that after lunch. Go ahead.
Well, we've been having this wonderful discussion this afternoon. There was a, a press release came out from ICF, the Intelligent Communities Forum, that some of you may have seen. So Savannah and her team have been working hard to submit on behalf of Gray County once again. And I'm really happy to let everyone know that we made it into the top twenty-one. So, hey.
Excellent, excellent, excellent. Still excellent. Somebody's got their microphone on. I'm not listening to that. We have no closed-meeting matters. We have no other business, or is there any other business? I don't, no. Any notices of motion? Not seeing any. I'll take a motion to adjourn. Councilor Nielsen and Councilor McKay. All those in fair? We stand adjourned. Thank you.